All set, Mr. Chair?
Okay, thank you. I would like to call the October sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, Genoa Charter Township Board of Trustees regular meeting to order at six thirty P. M. I would ask that you please join me for the invocation. Heavenly Father, in these increasingly troubled times, we pray for peace in our world, in our communities, and especially in our hearts. You have called upon us to be peacemakers and to love our neighbors as ourselves. We are failing and ask for your divine intervention to guide all of our interactions in an increasingly divisive world. Please give us the humility to truly listen and understand all perspectives. We ask that you soften hardened hearts, heal wounded spirits, and bless us with wisdom and truth. Help us build bridges, find common ground, and above all else, remember that we are all brothers and sisters in you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
May I get a roll call, please?
Hooverter.
Here.
Susie.
Here.
Deaton here, Spyker.
Here.
Hunt.
Here.
Reiber.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
And Joe.
Here.
Okay. And with that, at six thirty-two P. M., I would like to open the call to the public. Please address any comments to the chair, and your time will be limited to three minutes per person.
Good evening. Deborah B. D., three one zero nine Pine View Trail. I wanted to talk about the big sign that you're going to have for zoning applications, and that's a great idea. The only comment I had on that, as I have made real estate signs before, and I think the phone number should be large and bold, so that if somebody's passing by quickly, they can at least maybe spot that. And otherwise, I think it looks good. But the phone number at that bottom right corner should be more bold, like the top, I forget what the words are, public hearing. So it should be like that. And then the next thing I want to talk about is, you guys talked about the ordinance amendments a few weeks ago. And first, I want to clarify that it was a group of us that worked on those, not just one person. A lot of us had input on that, and we took a lot of time thinking about what we need and how to do it. And of course, we had a lawyer writing everything up. So it seemed to be some misunderstandings when some of you were reading it. For instance, they always start out with the preamble, most of them, ordinances, and it's typically protect health, safety, and welfare of the public or the community. And then we go to definitions, and that's pretty standard also. And the definitions can be one word or many, depending on what you're going to see in the ordinance. And for instance, in the noise ordinance that we put forward, there was three definitions. And one was noise, vibration, and person. Those aren't the ordinance, those are telling you what you're going to see. And we have to make it clear, these ordinances have to be clear, that here's what we mean by noise, here's what we mean by vibration, for instance. And every ordinance will have those different words in them. And then, so I don't think there was a good understanding of how that was written, and I would suggest that everybody takes a longer look at it, because I think they were very important. And as I think we're all in agreement, that there is definitely an ulterior motive here, and the ulterior motive is to protect the township. And I'm pretty sure that at least six of you ran on that, and you were overwhelmingly voted in to do that. So that's where we are, and I think you should look at those ordinances again after the lawyer takes a look. And then the decibel levels, there was misunderstanding about that. Decibel levels, as I've seen in many ordinances, have a daytime limit and a nighttime limit for good reason. You can't have somebody running their lawnmower outside your window at midnight. That would be too loud. So we typically have, you know, seventy decibel during the day and fifty at night. That does vary. Some townships, for instance, ours currently has seventy-five during the day. It was requested that we reduce that to seventy. Some have sixty, so seventy is not a low limit. And then the nighttime is typically fifty. I have seen forty-five, and that pretty much is across the board. And those change, you know, like ours is starts at seven A. M. to ten P. M., that higher limit, and ten P. M. to seven A. M., the lower limit. So take another look at that, please, and I think those are important. And even though we've got some other things coming up that are going to protect the township, I think those also should be added in, because they will cover other things that may come up. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Deb. Would anyone else like to speak at call to the public? Okay, at this time, I will close the call as of six thirty-six P. M., and I will entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Yeah, I've just got two slight clarifications on the minutes, so if we can move item two to the regular agenda, please.
Okay. So I have a motion of approval with number two changed to the regular agenda.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries. At this time, then, I would entertain a motion on a amended regular agenda.
Yeah, I'd move approval of the regular agenda with items two through nine.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries. Action item number two is a request to approve the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting minutes.
Okay, again, I just have two items, and they're just for clarification. On page four, item number six, the paragraph starts, Ms. Van Martyr stated the Pine Creek Road Project came in under budget. About midway through, it says, "We'll proceed with returning the prepayments." If we can revise that to say, "To refund the amount now overpaid on the prepayments."
Is that what was said on the video?
Yeah, because if we return the whole prepayment, then they'll owe us money, so.
Okay.
And then the only other item I have under member updates, under, in my paragraph, Ms. Hunt, says that the summer taxes can still be paid to the township through February two thousand and twenty-six with a one percent penalty per month.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That's it.
Okay.
I have a couple of requests also for an update to last meeting's minutes. There was some deputy cells here talking about the LCRP and then the speed monitoring equipment, and, you know, he was throwing out a lot of facts to help make the decision, because we're all newbies here, we don't know how these things work and everything. I would like to capture some of the details that Deputy Sell had stated during the presentation that he had provided to us. And these are in no particular, I'm sorry, but the officer stated that the license plate cameras were mainly intended to cover our commercial district, and that one camera is needed for each lane of traffic, one camera, one lane. And I would like to request that those comments be added to the minutes from last meetings, to last meetings minutes. Also, a couple of other statements that deputy made that is, and he said this a couple of different times, that those cameras, they only snap a photograph of the license plate. They're not going to be used to, he called it run the person, and I think we know what that means, you know, or provide any identification of the person at that time. So I would like that to be clarified and mentioned, you know, his statement be added to the minutes. And then he was careful to mention that that database that is maintained by the Michigan State Police is only to be authorized by, is only to be accessed by authorized and trained personnel, and that they only do this in certain circumstances and for legitimate reasons such as a missing person, an Amber Alert, Violent Crime Commission, you have a warrant out for your arrest, so kind of no-brainer things. I would just like those to be added to the minutes, please.
Okay, and just for the record, we have not demoted Lieutenant Sell.
Pardon me?
It's Lieutenant Sell.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's Lieutenant, he's big cheese.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
Now, do you have this written down for Patty, because that was a lot said?
Yeah.
All right. I know typically we don't do word-for-word minutes. I mean, these are some good clarification points that people do need to know.
And we could always, for his reference, go back to watch the video, too.
Well, if the video, something happens to that, I see why he wants to put it in the minutes. So that makes sense.
Can we also add that Lieutenant said that the installation of the cameras was not to monitor the citizens of Genoa Township, please?
Any other clarifications? Everything all set, Patty? Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion on the September fifteenth minutes.
Move to approve the regular agenda.
The minute, minutes.
Oh, the minutes.
The amended minutes.
Oh, I thought we already got, okay, move to amend the minutes, yes, September fifteenth.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second, any further discussion?
I don't have a second. Did you?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, seeing no further discussion, I ask all those in favor to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries. Action item number three is a presentation by Livingston County Sheriff Mike Murphy. Since this was brought up at our last, briefly during our last meeting, and this is a question that is going to appear on our master plan survey, we have invited the sheriff to fill us in a little bit about what dedicated policing might look like.
Yeah, so appreciate the invitation, and just for the record, I've got it on good authority. Lieutenant Sell does not care if he got demoted, as long as we don't mess with his pay, so he's all good. You know, contracted policing is something that comes up periodically throughout the county, so what I wanted to do was just kind of ramble for a minute and tell you a little bit about a lot, and then be happy to answer any questions. You know, when I saw the agenda, hey, it's a presentation, I think of a formal PowerPoint. No, if that's what you were expecting, sorry, you're not getting it. You're just going to get some honest dialogue. I look at this as the township dipping their toe in the water to see if it's feasible. So just a couple of things that I think you need to know. I forwarded the supervisor and I believe Kelly, the, an email that was put together back in two thousand and nineteen, maybe Candy got that, too, from an individual that did a little study on contract policing in Genoa Township. So there was some interesting information there. I didn't bother updating it. The numbers will change a little bit, but the content is still relevant today, frankly. You look at this township and Brighton Township, Heartland Township, frankly, not quite, and you compare that to Hamburg Township and Green Oak Township, and they're, y'all are pretty comparable when it comes to, well, you're the same when it comes to size. When it comes to population, pretty comparable, when it comes to S E V, pretty comparable. Green Oak Township has two police officers on duty at any given time, as does Hamburg. They've got their own police department, so, you know, you extrapolate that out to Genoa and Brighton, who don't, frankly. But really, I see both sides of this, right? It falls under the old saying, why buy the cow when you can get the milk for free? And frankly, I don't often get in front of a group when I don't tout public safety in Livingston County. We've got a phenomenal group, and it's not just the sheriff's office, it's not just the state police, it's not just Brighton Fire, it's the whole public safety arena. We work extremely well together. Every once in a while, we'll have a little sibling rivalry where we'll go out back and bloody somebody's nose, and then we just carry on, because, you know, really, truly, at the end of the day, our philosophy as a public safety group is that it's service to the public, right? When somebody calls nine-one-one, they don't care what patch is on the arm, they don't care what color the uniform is, they just need help for whatever their issue is that they're asking for help for. So one of the interesting things that I don't think people understand is that the county is not obligated to provide law enforcement service. So this really came to light back during the whole crash, if you will, oh eight through eleven, twelve-ish, and you're all familiar with how property taxes work and that whole thing, but it took a long time for the county to get back to where they were, and I think we just got there. But my point is this, they really started to look at what was mandated and what wasn't mandated, and there was some pretty serious conversations at my office about, hey, you know, you're not, this is, the law enforcement side of the house is not a mandated service, where the jail side is a statutory function of the sheriff's office, as are, there are some other statutory functions, but that law enforcement is not. So the county has funded the sheriff's office for a number of years at a level that they're comfortable doing, basically. So where contracting comes into play is when the municipality starts to feel that they're not getting the, what they would like to see in police service, honestly. So we enjoy contracts with Heartland Township, Tyrone Township, Osceola, Kahakta, Iosco, and those are all over the board as far as how those are structured, you know, from sixteen hours a month to two deputies, twelve hours a day, seven days a week. So it really just kind of depends on what the community is looking for and what the municipality is looking for. So one of the benefits of a contract versus your own, and I will tell you this, I had this conversation with Heartland, so I'm not speaking out of turn, if you ever decide, as long as I'm sheriff, if you ever decided to start your own police department, I would be the first one going against you, and I would be very, very, very vocal about that. And here's why. We enjoy a number of police agencies right now that work very well together, and frankly, not to call anybody stupid, but you would be stupid to start your own police department when you've already got an existing one. And frankly, it wouldn't have to be us either. I mean, there's opportunities out there for other contracts, right? Hamburg Township could bid, Foulerville could bid, as long as there's a police authority somewhere, they could actually bid on services, right? So it doesn't just have to be the sheriff's office. But my point is this, when you contract, you're just simply writing a check, right? I take all that liability, you don't have to worry about F. M. L. A., you don't have to worry about your officers hitting a deer and wiping out a patrol car, you don't have to worry about, oh, now you got somebody on, you know, maternity leave, you don't have to worry about your officers making a mistake, and now you're getting sued and that whole thing. That's all on us. And what the county did when this contracting was structured is we took all of our dollars, I mean, literally from bullets to, you know, the employee and everything in between, vacation time, court time, all that stuff, and we came up with an average, and then we backed that off twenty-five percent. So you're never going to do it any cheaper, frankly, to provide a good service. And, you know, when you contract with us, you get the entire sheriff's office, right? You get our detective bureau, you get our traffic safety bureau, and the list goes on and on. And again, it's not a sales pitch for contracting, it's just to explain how we got to where we're at. So I would like you to think about this for a half a second. The sheriff's office has the same number of deputies on the road, not in total, but the same number of road patrol deputies today as we did when I hired in in nineteen ninety. Think about that.
Wow.
The state police has less troopers than when I hired in in nineteen ninety, and they now do two counties as opposed to one county. So it's really not a matter of if you guys get into that, into the contracting business at some point, it's really a matter of when, and when does that make sense, and how that works. The county's not going to, I've already mentioned, they don't have to provide law enforcement services, they're certainly not going to just fall getting out of the shower one day and go, ah, I think we should hire fifty more deputies to help out Genoa Township and Brighton Township and Kahakta Township and all these other townships that, you know, don't have their own police agency, just not going to happen. So, and then I mentioned how the contract costs come about in that everything's figured in, and that number's backed off twenty-five percent, and then that gets changed every three years, and the reason that that gets changed, normally we build in a three percent escalator, but every three years, not your contract, but every three years, the deputies' collective bargaining agreement comes up. So then there's new costs that are figured in, right? So for example, our contract rate about three contracts ago actually went down, because they, they, the deputies, started paying a little bit more towards their pension and medical. So it was actually a decrease. Not seen one since, haven't seen one before, but there was a, you know, a decrease. So, but we build in a three percent. So what that would look like, let's say, just for example, today, you sign a three-year deal right this minute, that the contract is up, their collective bargaining agreement is up the end of this month or this year, that wouldn't get re-upped, that contract amount wouldn't change in twenty-six or twenty-seven, it would stay the same, because you already signed a contract with a three percent increase, but then it would change at the end of that contract, we would go with the existing collective bargaining agreement, right, whatever those changes were, the new costs, and go from there, so just so that makes sense. So I don't know what else I can tell you, I'd be happy to, I'm more than happy to answer any questions. The, I guess I'll just say this, the advantage to, let me back up. So the way we work in this county, the sheriff's office and the state police are responsible for the unincorporated areas that don't have their own police agency, right? I. E. Genoa, Brighton, Heartland, Kahakta, you can go down the list. Foulerville police have their own, Howell City, some of the townships, et cetera. So we take care of everything else. When we are dispatched, those work on closest cars, okay? So in other words, if we've got a sheriff car at, you know, Latson and Crooked Lake, and there's an incident at, you know, Latson in ninety-six, that's going to be the car that gets dispatched, right? Conversely, if the state police have a car there, they're the ones that are going to get dispatched, that's how it works. And then it's kind of like a hospital triage as well, where those calls are prioritized. So it's going to sound bad, but we really don't care that your mailbox got smashed, we'll get there when we get there, right? We do care that somebody got in a crash and they're laying there bleeding, probably going to move that one up on the list a little bit. So that's how that works, and again, it works between both police agencies. The advantage to having a contract is that dedicated service, right? So for example, today, if there's a call that comes in Genoa Township, our car gets dispatched, they get dispatched, they clear that, they get sent to the next thing, maybe the next thing is, you know, north end of Deerfield Township. And let's say we've got another car that's tied up on something, then there's another call that comes in to Genoa, they're just, it's just going to have to wait, right? Assuming the state police isn't available. And I mentioned their numbers and our numbers as well, that's been a significant shift. We used to be pretty darn close, fifty-fifty, with the number of calls that we responded to and that they responded to. Now that's more like a seventy-five, twenty-five, with us carrying about seventy-five percent of the load. Again, and that goes back to the fact that they're, no bash on the state police, but to the fact that they're down number-wise, and they picked up Washington County, where before that wasn't the case. They worked out of the Brighton Post and works exclusively with us in Livingston County. So anyways, I can go through the, you know, I could spend an hour with more advantages to dedicated patrol, but it's really, when you do that, it's your police department. There becomes a ownership, there becomes a true community policing, because, you know, but to the fact that they're down number-wise, and they picked up Washington County, where before that wasn't the case. They worked out of the Brighton Post and works exclusively with us in Livingston County. So, anyways, I can go through the, you know, I could spend an hour with more advantages to dedicated patrol, but it's really, when you do that, it's your police department. There becomes a ownership, there becomes a true community policing because, you know, that is your guy or your gal. And I would just encourage you, if you're thinking about it more than just tonight's meeting, reach out to the townships that have a contract, really, and just talk to their people. They're living it, they know. They know why they did it, they know why they continue to do it, and they know the advantages, they know the disadvantages. I don't think there's a disadvantage. They know the advantages. And again, that's, I'm not a, I'm just, I'm offering information, I'm not a salesperson, because frankly, it does us no good. I mean, we don't benefit from this, so to speak, right? Other than I can, my office can provide a better service to other areas of the county if there are folks that step up with a contract. That's really the only benefit. But, you know, I already mentioned financially, it's a loser. And the logic behind that, when we came up with that formula, was, A, to make it more, to make it more beneficial to do a contract as opposed to start your own police agency, frankly. But also, the fact that the residents of Genoa Township are already paying taxes towards the county, right? Again, it's not one thing they have to do, but those tax dollars that are paid to the county, they support my office, but they also support, you know, the prosecutor's office, the judges, the clerk's office, or register of deeds, you know, list goes on. So, it's not just my office. So, anyway, with all that, what do you got? Who's on, what do you got?
I have some questions.
Sure.
So, when you say that you're pulling from other areas, like the cops go all over the place, if we were to contract for Genoa Township, would you have new hires for the police? Or would you have to take what's already at your department and then transfer them over to this area?
So, what we've agreed to with the board is that we would, for every, I can't, I don't remember the number off the top of my head, but I think it's about every two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars that we bring in, in a contract, we would be able to replace. So, that's kind of, there's a formula for that as well. And that's based on that twenty-five percent, right? So, if, pick a numbers, let's say, and I'm a, I don't do math real well because I'm a cop. So, you know, you guys sign on for five people, right, tomorrow. The county's not gonna let me hire five people tomorrow. They're gonna say, let's look at this formula, it's gonna come out to three-point-seven-five, or whatever it is, right? But, you know, I'd be very honest as well, the conversations historically with this contract conversation has been, you are one of the townships that suck up a majority of the resources because you're bigger and all that stuff, as is Brighton Township. And the response typically is, yes, we suck up a lot of the resources from the Sheriff's Office, but also we contribute a lot to the coffers of the county, too. So, therefore, we should get more resources, right? Then say, for example, Conway Township, who's got a population of a thousand people and, you know, ten thousand cows, no disparage on Conway Township, but you get the idea.
And so, if we hired somebody, I saw the contract time versus the regular time. Was that only for one person? Because it was only saving about six minutes. And so, I'm just trying to, like, do the math here and try to figure this out.
Yeah, so, those contract times, don't pay attention to those. And I say, well, I say that because this, those times that are in there are specific to other townships that we contract with. So, it's really a measure for them. But when those statistics, and I'm not a computer guy, but when all those statistics are drug over, they just drop in. Does that make sense?
Okay.
So, even though Genoa Township, in the formula that I send out to y'all, it shows, you know, contract time, non-contract time, but if you look, that contract time might be three to eleven, right? So, for example, that three to eleven is one particular township that we service, three to eleven.
And so, it's a little bit more rural and probably takes a lot longer to get to?
Exactly.
I see what you're saying. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yep.
At the last meeting, the lieutenant said he would not recommend us looking at one, that we would need two officers.
Well, I mean, let's face it, it's what the checkbook can afford, right? I mean, let's be honest. That's a decision that you folks have to make. In a perfect world, if I could wave my magic wand, I gave you the example. I mean, Green Oak and Hamburg both are very similar to y'all, and they have two people working, you know, twenty-four-seven. It really, and I asked this question to my board the last time we had a discussion about finances. We're expensive. Just, it costs me about a buck seventy-five a deputy, when you total everything in, right? Excuse me, wages, fringes, all this stuff. That's a lot of money. That's eight hours a day. And then, that's really not even eight hours a day, three sixty-five, when you figure in vacation time and comp time and all that other stuff, right? So, it's expensive. Now, again, that's all figured in the contracting formula. But, to answer your, to answer your question is, what level of service do you want to provide? And that was my question to the board. The question to me was, what's the right number of deputies to police the county? Can't answer that. Just, I just simply cannot answer that. But let me ask you a question. What level of service do you want to provide to the residents? That's the question, and then I can tell you the answer, right? If, I can police the county with one deputy, right? Might take you four hours or four days to take your break-in report, or, you know, four and a half hours to get there if there's a shooting or something. It can be done with one. Not very efficiently, not providing a real good service.
So, Mike, if, just to use a round number, if we were to have two full-time deputies here, twenty-four-seven, we'd probably be looking at seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year.
Keep going. Pretty sure from the numbers. Two-seventy-five, yeah, six, seven-hundred thousand, something like, I'm guessing.
I had five-eighty-five for twenty-four-seven, one.
I think, well, I was, yeah, I was looking at for, seven-hundred-and-fifty plus.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
So, if we had a dedicated officer, I mean, like, right now, at any given time, is there always some, because Genoa, we have a pretty high call volume. Is there always somebody in the township now? If we, if we, I guess I should, that's a question. But also, if we contracted somebody, would there ever be more than one? Like, that would still do the regular patrols, a po, you know, besides?
In addition to, yeah, yeah, that's how we would operate. So, again, I'll go back to the, kind of the triage example. So, I'll be brutally honest with you. One of the reasons that you guys have, your residents, haven't talked too much about police service is because we're here so much. It's just, frankly, that's just the bottom line. Because if you remember what I said before, it's a, it's where the calls are at and who's closest to those calls. So, when my guy or gal shows up in Genoa Township to take whatever report, it's hard to get out of Genoa Township, honestly, because then there's a next call in Genoa Township and the next call, right? So, it might take them a minute to get out. Obviously, that does not apply if it's a priority. They're leaving the mailbox smashing to go take care of the personal injury accident or the armed robbery, or, you know, the domestic, or whatever the circumstances are. So, that's why you've enjoyed, frankly, the service that you've enjoyed for as long as you have. Sure. Just to finish up on that one, I think I answered it, but yes, we tend to, this is gonna sound a little bit bad, but we tend to value our relationships with folks that we have contracts with because we enjoy that relationship and we pay a little extra attention to them.
Okay, thank you.
So, Sheriff Murphy, you used Green Oak Township as a similar, I guess, demographic size to Genoa Township. Looking at some of the graphs that you've provided here, it seems like Green Oak Township has, they're like one or two percent of the call volume.
Yeah.
And I wondered why, what drove them to say, that's not good enough? We want zero percent, I want to hire more officers.
So, thank you for bringing that to my attention and letting me talk about that. So, you will notice on those graphs that I send that occasionally, Green Oak shows up there, and occasionally Hamburg shows up, but in occasionally, Howell City or whatever. But those really aren't, we don't measure those statistics, okay? Because we don't provide service to them. So, I can't compare the townships, yours, Brighton, or anybody else for that matter, to Green Oak or Hamburg. Now, what could be done is, my suggestion would be, you all reach out to their chief and say, hey, what's your budget? What's your calls for service? You know, kind of what's that look like? And then, and then you could compare it to this sheet. But there's no, we don't measure that. Does that make sense? Because we only take care of the unincorporated. So, everything that you see up there, so I'll just go around the horn here real quick. So, I'm going from my right clockwise. So, that's Osceola, Putnam, Tyrone, others I'll explain in a minute. Brighton Township, Kahakta, Conway, Deerfield, Genoa, Handy. Howell Three is a city, that's a little bit of an anomaly. And I'll tell you about that one in a second, too. And then moving up, Heartland, Howell, Iosco, and Marion. So, that, those are the areas that we provide service to. Now, Howell, that Howell Three, we often will do, like, let's say, for example, somebody comes in and turns themselves in on a warrant, right? Or something happens in our parking lot. That's coded in the city of Howell, even though we don't police the city of Howell. So, that's where those statistics come from. Make sense? And then others, those would typically be, like, assist other police agencies or something like that. Those really don't figure into the equation either. So, if you notice, I never, I never said Fowlerville PD, or, you know, Pinney PD, or Green Oak Township, or Hamburg Township, because we don't serve.
So, did, so did they decide to go out there and contract extra coverage? Was there anything, were they seeing a spike in crime? Or what was their reasoning? I mean, what was the benefit that they perceived they would gain by spending the extra money?
So, I will just speak to, Heartland is probably the closest comparison. And I'll be brutally honest with you, our little town, our little contracts that we have, for example, Kahakta, Iosco, Marion, Osceola, we have those contracts because our resources get sucked up by you guys and Brighton and the bigger townships. They literally contracted with us because they weren't seeing our cars. So, now, why Hamburg started their own police department way back when, and Green Oak? I really don't know the history there. The undersheriff could probably speak, certainly to Green Oak. But it, when a police department is started, or there's a contract with a police agency, it's really residence-driven. It goes back to what I mentioned before about what kind of service are the residents asking for? What kind of service do you want to provide to the residents? That's the driving force. Again, it doesn't do me nothing, frankly. More employees, more headaches. Oh, I said that out of my outside voice. Gosh, they ain't gonna do that every once in a while.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation, Sheriff Murphy. I, for options on our master plan survey, I just threw out some different, you know, eight hours, five days a week, eight hours, seven days a week. And then, I had had twenty-four-seven, you know, as kind of being the dream scenario thoughtfully in our thought process. And Lieutenant Sella actually mentioned that you might be better to have two and kind of overlap them in the day. You know, my thought process was, geez, you know, I'm asleep at night, that's when I really need a lot of protection. And he kind of mentioned that, as of right now, anyway, you know, the coverage for the level of activity that goes on at night isn't so bad, whereas there's a more strain during the day, when more people are awake.
Yeah, till about eleven o'clock when most normal people go to bed, right? So, I, just quickly, I would strongly suggest that you go on our website because we've got a dashboard there where you can drill right down and see everything in real time, what's going on, it's updated every twenty-four hours. That give you a real, real good picture on what's going on in the county. I love Lieutenant Sella, and in his world, and in mine, too. If, you know, you could just put some pixie dust down there, two, two twenty-four-seven would be great. But if you wanted to get, if you want to get in the business, I would suggest that we just start out small so we can build that relationship and kind of get some feedback from your residents and, you know, go from there. The last thing I'll say, and then I'll shut up. And I'm more than welcome to come back anytime. You guys all got my number. If you don't, Joe's got it, Candy's got it, Kevin's got it, Robin, I think you got it, Patty, you got it. Give me a call, right? Let's have coffee, whatever. However, the last thing about Genoa, I'm sorry, Green Oak and Hamburg, they also run a millage, right, to support their, it's not, you know, it's not general funded. So, just something to think about that way, too.
I just have a quick question. So, would it be like Monday through Friday, or do you recommend weekends? Or it's all just random?
So, what I would suggest, I would say, what are you guys looking for? And then we sit down and say, okay, based on the call volume and the types of call in your township, this is the, this is the window, right? So, for, like, example, with Putnam, we serve them eight hours a day, five days a week, and the hours change in the summertime. Because they want us there more during the school day, right? So, they start earlier in the morning, and then they move to more of an afternoon shift in the afternoon. Har, or Tyrone Township has a set twelve-hour day, I'm sorry, an eight-hour day, seven days a week. And we just looked at the analytics and we said, hey, this is kind of your eight-hour window. So, we would do the same with you guys.
Can I ask a quick question? Is there an industry standard for response time? Or is it?
No, I got a sheriff buddy that's a sheriff in South Dakota. Our county's like five-hundred-and-seventy-five square miles. His county's fifteen-hundred square miles, and he's got like two deputies per shift. So, the response time there is forever, right? Population's very small.
Right.
But it doesn't mean crap when you're, when you need help and it's forty-five minutes away, lights and siren, right?
So, Sheriff Murphy, let's say that a municipality has an officer for four hours. Just four hours a day, that's all they want, that's all they can afford. Would it be possible to say, hey, eight hours, and I'll pay for the other four?
So, I hate.
So, the person would shift base of operation, right?
Probably not. And the reason I say that is because when you get into the whole, let's make a deal side thing, then it doesn't take long for everybody else to hear about that, and then it's kind of doing the same thing for everybody else, you know? But I would just, I'll repeat what I said earlier. We tend to do a better job of taking care of our folks that we have a contract with just because we value that relationship. That doesn't mean you get a bunch of special stuff. That doesn't mean you, you might not get a speeding ticket. That doesn't mean you get a Geo Free card, you know what I mean? But we tend to make sure that you're taken care of a little bit better.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you very much for your time and for explaining to our residents how it works.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any further comments on the situation?
I just want to comment that I think the Sheriff's Department's doing a phenomenal job for the county. Thank you for your service.
Do you want, Jason's here, and he was from Green Oak. Do you want to hear why they got their own police department?
Sure.
It's a long story. I was born the year they started, sixty-nine.
Oh.
We'll cover that at a future time. Thank you, though.
They need it with twenty-three right there. Okay, okay. They need it with twenty-three there. There's always an accident.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, so that was just a discussion item, so no action needed. And so, with that, we will move on to action item number four, which is consideration of a request from the Brighton Area Fire Authority for the approval of Resolution two-five-one-zero-zero-six-A related to the repair, maintenance, and upgrade of the Livingston County emergency communication systems. We organized a meeting with three of the commissioners, Commissioner Fiani, Commissioner Drick, and Commissioner Nakagiri. And our own fire chief, Mike O'Brien, came, as well as Heartland Chief, Adam Carroll. And then Rick, myself, and Todd sat in on that meeting as observers, flies on the wall, so to speak, just to see exactly what was going on before we made any decisions on a resolution. And we were, we were very pleased with the outcome of that meeting, but since ninety-two percent of it went completely over our heads, we will allow Chief O'Brien to explain his take on what occurred in that meeting.
Thank you, Supervisor. Yeah, we greatly appreciate the meeting with the county commissioners. I think the dialogue is something that we've been trying to have in many arenas. But really, the source of what happened... the source of what happened is we were unable to alert our firefighters for a given period of time. Now, how do you alert a firefighter? Um, so if you think we're a combination fire system, we have people on duty, uh, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. You have four firefighters on duty in Genoa Township, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. We had no means to alert them for a small period of time. And so how we alert firefighters and how we talk to firefighters are completely different. And we have duplicity in the systems because it is so critical. So on a normal day, we have a series of about seven towers and something called VHF. VHF is what powers this little device. It has really good coverage for the most part. Um, and when we say it wouldn't work, this would go off and we could hear no voice. So we didn't know if it was a call for us, for somebody else, it was a mistone. You would have to get to a radio that looks like this to figure out what was happening. And so these are on completely different systems. And the complexity of alerting public safety, um, can be difficult, especially if you think about paid-on-call firefighters that are at home. We don't pay our paid-on-call firefighters to listen to a radio twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Your significant other would hate you, um, just with the sheer volume. Brighton Fire, uh, is just short of six thousand calls for service a day, twenty, twenty-five calls, uh, in a, in a day. Today was one of those days that those numbers are hitting those, very much surpassed that. And so the system was broken. We had to go to a backup, which meant we didn't get the coverage. Uh, I could be in a portion of, of the jurisdiction and my monitor not go off and somebody's in the city of Brighton and theirs does go off. And so we had to implement a bunch of measures in place. And really, the timing came forward that this was something that the fire service was struggling greatly with. And when I say fire service, it was all of Livingston County Fire Service plus our paramedics. Our paramedics are alerted the same way that our firefighters are. It's a shared VHF system. There is no doubt that none of what our resolution or the action from any of our fire service speaks poorly on our dispatchers. Our dispatchers are phenomenal humans that have a very difficult job. Um, to have somebody crying because maybe the, somebody they're, they love is sick, or their house is on fire, or they're at gunpoint, is probably one of the most difficult jobs. And so none of what we're talking about is about our dispatchers. It's about having the technology to support them. And that paging system was revamped in about two thousand and six and seven. And it just hasn't been maintained. And we hit a point of failure. We had a lot of failures happening in a very short period. We had points where our backup system, which is text paging to alert our firefighters, that went down. Um, and that's part of our CAD system, CAD, Computer Aided Dispatch System. Uh, we had a, we had a moment of about fifteen minutes where fire trucks were unable to speak with Central Dispatch on their radios, the separate system. So we were having this very much series of failures for various reasons. Um, and truly the action that the Bafa Board took was aimed at really a couple things. First, the short term. We need to get the paging fixed and we need all the resources pointed in that direction. The second part is coming up with a robust day-to-day communication system that works. Police, and I, I don't want to speak for my law enforcement partners, but police and how they use radios need instant response in very certain, in many circumstances. It is their lifeline when they're on the freeway when something's happening. In the fire service, ours typically happens in many cases, but it's typically in a structure fire. It's not the place that you can use a cell phone. It's not the place that you can't have reliable communication. If you get into what's called a mayday situation where you're trapped, hurt, or something inside of a fire, there's no visual indicator, there's no technology we have, except your voice to say, I need help. And when our radio communications, when we push the button, and for those of you who are old enough to remember the next tell bonk, when you push the button and you get the next tell bonk, that means your radio's not communicated and nobody is hearing your transmissions. And so as the county, uh, is exploring, for, for quite some time, we have been working on a strategic plan. This is not something that just today came up. Um, myself, Jason Plus, Chief Sirianni have all been working for three or more years on a strategic plan that really needs to dive into this. We could see the VHF failures coming. It's, it, is, is anybody still using an iPhone two? iPhone three? iPhone four? That's what technology we're using for our alerting of our firefighters. And so just like our iPhones changed, so does our technology. And it has to be maintained. It breaks. It, it needs to be repaired. And it has to stay robust with the system, just like our everyday talking. And so we understand how complex this issue is. And it wasn't something that we just lightly came forward. Um, it is very frustrating to see firefighters who can't go and help because they weren't ever alerted. And there were multiple incidents where I was responding to an incident pulling over so I could send an alpha page out on my phone to get firefighters to respond. I'm not going to text and drive, right? So I have to pull over because all of our resources are moving towards a point. And so we don't always have those bodies. So fast forward to the resolution in the, in the meeting with the commissioners. I think we've had, over, over time, we've had lots of good dialogue with our commissioners. And their role in this is really a funding piece. I don't expect our county commissioners to understand the complexity of alerting and talking with firefighters. Very difficult, very comprehensive. And to be quite frank, I don't understand all the details. We need our dispatch centers in these systems to have the support. This is one of those few things that when you look at communications back in the late nineties, we went away from separate dispatch centers within the county to something that was very robust within Livingston County Central Dispatch. It is something that will save a life because we always talk about something called interoperable communications. I should have on my radio, that by the way costs about eight thousand dollars, I should be able to talk to the sheriff. And we can do that. And that is one of the saving graces that Central Dispatch does for us. We have this very interoperable communication path. But we have to maintain that and it's becoming very expensive. So the first ask that we had with the county commissioners, and I think the response was positive, was our VHF system, although half repaired, is not fully functioning. And we need the support of the county commissioners to get that full up and running. And that means the fiber optics, that means the backup, it means everything associated with that VHF paging that we get it back up and running. The members in attendance on Thursday, Thursday night last week, um, seemed to be agreeable to, to helping support that cause. The second is, in front of the county commissioners right now is a funding request, which is to fund the eight hundred megahertz. That's what our radio communications are, are on. It is weak. We have one tower within Livingston County. And it's been that way for a long time. Well, you heard from the sheriff how their staffing hasn't increased. Well, radio communication capacity hasn't increased. And if you think about all of the incidents happening at one point in time, the sheriff, EMS, fire, uh, some of our DPW, they're all on the same radio system, which when we push to talk, it's a capacity issue. If your cell phone doesn't hook to your carrier and you're in a spot that in Genoa it doesn't work, what do you do? You go find a new carrier. We don't have those choices. And so we need a s- long-term investment into the towers. Now, something we learned on Thursday night with our meeting with the commissioners, which is very positive, is they have set aside approximately thirteen million dollars, some out of ARPA funds, some out of their capital improvement, to go into this five-tower improvement, which is a great thing. It's something we've been talking about as part of the long-term strategic planning. So we're, we're very optimistic that we heard that, um, from both Commissioner Fiani and Commissioner Dricke, um, that they anticipate funding that. So we're very positive in the meeting that that occurred and we're grateful for that continued support. Now, from a local perspective, the third item, um, in, in really, there's four items. And, and let me start with the, the third, is from a local issue, how we dispatch fire trucks is all part of this very complex network called CAD or Computer Aided Dispatch. It's what tells a dispatcher what fire truck is supposed to come to Township Hall if it's on fire. It's the same system that alerts what law enforcement officer or what EMS unit. It's a very complex web. Again, we left something called Clemis, um, back in two thousand and seven, six, eight, ten. And we really haven't updated our CAD since then. It's been a very difficult si- system that's had some operational updates, but it hasn't fully lived up to our system. And really where it comes to today, we're seeing outages. There's days that we get reports that it's offline, which just means our reporting, our mapping, and what fire trucks are supposed to go is going to be delayed. And the dispatcher's going to have to go back to old good old-fashioned paper and spreadsheets, which when you call nine-one-one, you want that call to be very processed from the call taker. It ends up on the fire dispatcher screen. It says what fire department, what resources. They push some buttons and it goes. When CAD doesn't work, I mean, think about our daily interaction. What happens when your physical computer stops working for an hour? They are very dependent and so are my firefighters. And so that's probably one of the third legs of the stool here that we're really encouraging. Um, we do know that there is some funding possibilities with Congressman Barrett's office. Um, but that is not just a Bafa thing. It's not just a sheriff thing. It's an all-of-us thing that we're really trying to put. Now, I think both Commissioner Fiani and Commissioner Dricke, um, said that they would look into it. And we're very optimistic, I think, in this. And there is the possibility that there might be a fix to part of where we're at today. But it's, again, it's something that we've got to come up with, a long-term strategic plan. And, and just for Genoa Township's sake, right, we, we are so dependent on each other and we are a customer of this system. In Bafa over years, when, when Central Dispatch came together, our radios, our CADs, they were paid for. They were maintained. They were all part of the Central Dispatch system. As staffing costs, as building costs have raised, the distribution of physical assets to locals has been pulled back. And it started with, we're not going to provide CAD computers anymore to locals. And so when I say locals, that's Brighton Fire, uh, that's Green Oak Fire, uh, Brighton City Police, any of those. And so they pulled back that CAD responsibility and said, it's now on you to buy them. Likewise, and again, I don't know if this was a county commissioner's decision versus a budget decision and what was carried for with previous dispatch directors. And so when we started Central Dispatch, we had all of these things. And it's gone from that to a hundred percent on the locals. So case in point, Brighton Fire, in seven years, has spent about seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars on CAD computers and mobile radios to keep them current for our staff. You can't expect a firefighter or a law enforcement officer to operate a computer in a bouncing fire truck that's ten years old. And unfortunately, they're not like iPads. Our software is limiting our hardware. And because our software's limiting our hardware, we have to buy certain things that are very expensive. And so the last little piece here, which was a brief discussion with the commissioners in attendance, is we need the right people in the room to have a long-term strategic plan about funding as it relates to this issue. I don't know how much of this is born under the county budget. But I do feel this is a countywide discussion that really needs to take place with the right people in the room. That's the sheriff's office. That's our local PD. That's Brighton Fire. That's Howell Fire. It's Putnam Fire. It's a township supervisor. It's a city mayor. And those folks have to get in the room because Brighton Fire, at seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars spent in seven years, was only about half of what we should be spending. We're trying to right-size our budget to be able to pay for those things to get our staff what they need. Because at the end of the day, when our firefighters are in trouble, I need to make sure that radio communication system works. And so when you start to look at the dialogue, um, I, I appreciate Supervisor Spire and his, uh, work, uh, to get the commissioners here. I think it was a very fruitful dialogue that we hope continues. And we hope that, right, we get the VHS system fixed, as they said. Um, and we're, we're optimistic. We're waiting on Motorola. And it's a single vendor system that we're just in the queue. I think the second part is really working, as the county commissioner said, that they're going to agree to getting those towers. That's a two-year-plus project to get it going. And so we're optimistic that that towers. Once those towers are in, we can start to have different discussions about paging, alerting firefighters. But step one is those, those getting put in. Um, and so we're here to continue to work. I think if, for those of you who've been around me, we don't shy away from work. Uh, Bafa prides itself on being some of the hardest workers in the room. That means we're willing to show up when there's hard discussions to be made. And we don't always have the answers. And we want to work really hard to get the right stuff for this. Because, you know, I'm charged at the end of the day in making sure our community stays really safe. And if we can't alert our firefighters, they can't go do what they are born to do. And that's really where I think a lot of this came from. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Like I said, I really appreciate Genoa Township, uh, for getting our, our supervisors there. I'm appreciative of the dialogue that we had with the three commissioners. Um, you know, it'd be mistaken. I did have a phone conversation with Commissioner Deaton on multiple occasions as well. So I appreciate, um, his dialogue with me outside of that meeting. Um, because, you know, he does cover part of our jurisdiction as well. And I think, uh, it was a fruitful conversation with Commissioner Deaton as well.
So I'll just comment from the meeting we had. Uh, I was encouraged by the commissioner's response to, um, solving the, the immediate problems, or at least working on the immediate problems. And Commissioner Fiani said that he felt like it'd be closer to December or something, that he might be ready to sign a contract, uh, for those towers. And it'd be a two-year process, uh, to, to get those installed, which seems like an eternity to me. Uh, it's probably normal for you to deal with that type of timeframe. But I understand that there are some immediate issues with the dropouts and, and other issues, especially with the new CAD that not even up and running right or something. Um, what can they do or we do to help expedite that stuff more timely for the immediate Band-Aid, if you will, uh, for that?
So, um, our technical staff with the dispatch supervisors have had regular meetings, referenced the, the now issue, which is VHF paging. Um, we have been stable for about two weeks, um, in alerting. We did have what appears to be some hiccups this weekend that we're trying to trace down. So I can't speak to what those are. We're just trying to trace down how those happen. But we've been relatively stable across the county, which is good. Um, and I think it's the encouragement, uh, that I think Commissioner Fiani said that he would try to call Motorola to see if he could pick up that timeframe a little bit, which I appreciate if he has a, has a phone call into somebody because he's working on the tower project. Um, the second part, as it relates to the CAD discussion, so, um, there are, Livingston County EMS decided to go their own way with their own CAD, uh, separate to what law and fire are using. Um, and we, our staff evaluated technically and felt that staying on the current system was better operationally for us. Um, and I appreciate what Director Felpasch, he's the head of EMS, is doing. The existing CAD interface is not able to push data to this new CAD for EMS. And he is trying not to break current CAD. And, and for those of you who are technical people, it's in the backend and the APIs that push the data. What he's trying to do is make sure a dispatcher doesn't have to key in the call for the fire department on one CAD, turn and key over to the EMS unit for their CAD. I think most of us are going to agree that that is not good and anything to double entry. So Director Felpasch, I think, did a really ominous job of trying to say, hey, we're going to hold. Um, he's got a lot of phone calls with our CAD provider, Central Square and the OSSI product, to see if they can do it. Um, and so I think in some email chain since the Thursday meeting, um, it appears that there's about a six-month forecast on that EMS CAD to be up and operational. But he is really trying to work to make sure it's seamless in today's world, as well as whatever future CAD could be.
And you're still about a week out on Motorola showing up?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Sounds like, uh, October twentieth probably is our target date for Motorola.
To show up?
To show up. But they are sending-
And that's on the VHF paging.
Exactly.
Yep.
So, um, they're aware that this is a stat, stat need. So, uh, the commissioners are also still looking for a tower location in either Conway or Handy Township. So those of you with great locations for towers, please reach out.
Just need an acre, maybe two.
Well, the comment, full implementation of all needed upgrades, two years, concerns me. I, I'm, I'm very happy that the meeting was held and it sounds like it went very well. And, um, Band-Aids are good, but to wait two years for this full upgrade in and making all of our firefighters and police safe and getting the calls that they need is very concerning. I mean, this ARPA money's been out there a long time.
And, and we have done a, a couple presentations with a select number of commissioners on this topic, um, to show the work that the strategic planning did. And I don't think, I, I will say that I thought the strategic planning group put a very fair- proposal forward. I think we understand the difficulty with funding and quite honestly, communications across Livingston County is about a $50 million upgrade. When we're talking over in Oakland County, they just finished theirs at about a 90-some million. We don't have the same tower density or the building density that they have, which should create a lesser system. It's really, the question becomes the end user. And so I agree, part one, the, the tower upgrade is a much-needed thing and it solves a piece of the overall strategic plan that needs to be in place. Those towers won't do us good if we can't upgrade the radios to match them. And so there's little things like, for Brighton, it is very important that we have the ability to talk with Oakland fire units. Their radio technology in the bulk of our radios cannot be upgraded. This is one of, Brian's going to correct me, 12? This is one of 12 radios that Brighton bought a year ago, finally got programmed, I got it last week, I can finally turn to the channel and talk to Milford Fire, I can finally turn and talk to. Now, that's not necessarily a county commissioner thing, but it forecasts the issue of how complex communications and how important it is. And I, I go back to my statement, I don't know if this is purely a Livingston County government thing. I think we got to get the right people in the room to have a truthful dialogue because I'm not sure how we pay for these. Every firefighter needs one of these. And on a fire, Brian has two of these on and he's trying to listen to two of these. You ever tried to listen to two cellphones at the same time? It takes a trick when you're the boss of a fire. But we are, we are in a very large scale, we are doing some large-scale training within the county, both in September and later in October. We have maxed out the system. On a very simple exercise, we've maxed it out where we can't talk. And so the towers will hopefully help us fix that, but the end key here is, all of our communities are going to be in a discussion about how do I replace these and at what price tag. Fire is one issue, rugged, stability, ability to talk. Law enforcement has something that's creeping up on them, which is a privacy issue as it relates to encryption that's coming down, that they're trying to meet. So a lot of the users of the public safety radio system have a lot of things in play and we've got to drive a long-term dialogue, whether it's a countywide millage, a countywide discussion, but I think it takes all of us locals to the county to be on board.
I have a couple of quick questions. So from my understanding, the commissioners have been working on this for the last two years. This is not something that has just come about. The only immediate need was the VHF system, which only went down about a month ago, and you brought that to the commissioners' attention, and they immediately approved you getting, contacting Motorola, and they have an appointment to come out the weekend, or the week of the 20th. So that immediate need is being taken care of. So from my understanding, this is all in the works with the commissioners, and I'm not sure what we're going to accomplish here tonight by passing a resolution to make you guys work with the commissioners. I think Genoa needs to stay out of it. You guys are in good talks, there's been progress that has been made, and I just, I really don't feel that we need to do this. I mean, you guys had, a couple years ago, there was a millage for the Brighton Fire Authority. What was that millage for?
So let me, I think you have two questions there, and I asked for the millage. The first, the millage was really for our capital improvement plan, which really related around buildings and apparatus in our, our firefighter turnout gear. And so that's what those are. As it relates to how we can use those funds, I can't use those funds for necessarily a countywide, I can't build towers. Towers isn't something that's on our purview as Brighton Fire.
Okay.
I can use them and we have used those funds to buy radios. And that's that long-term discussion that I think it has to take place because it has taken such an impact on so many of our budgets. As for the first part of your discussion, you know, typically, we don't deal with our county commissioners in the sense of something like this with an outage. And so the outage, this is the implication that it had in Brighton. I can't, I, I could give you examples within the rest. When we go to an outage of VHF paging, we have no way to alert our firefighters, except for a text page. Text pages don't wake up firefighters at 2:00 in the morning, specifically our paid-on-call. Case in point, we had a vehicle hit on 96. Our staff, it was at 6:00 AM on a Sunday morning. One of our firefighters was hurt, we had a person trapped in a car, and we were already on a rollover accident. They asked for more resources to come. We hit a, what we call "y'all come," which should have brought me about 50 firefighters. We got six. When we peeled the onion back later, most of our staff said, "My pager never went off." Case in point, why now the fire chief pulls over and sends messages out to staff on texts to see if we can get it back. So although, yes, this is the mix of how complex this system is. I would agree with you that the county commissioners have been working on the plan, so we knew there was an RFP out, but we did not know until Thursday night that funding has been set aside. We learned that Thursday night, which I'm forever grateful for. The complexity of even how that meeting started was, I don't think our county commissioners understood the gravity of the VHF failure and the separation of the two. The 800 is one system and then the VHF is a completely separate and they, it's not the same. And I think the county commissioners, and I, let me pause, I don't expect a county commissioner to know that. I really don't. That's why they have a dispatch director, that's why they have an admin, that's why they have experts. And so I, I, I don't think I ever thought that that should be there. What we needed was their support to help move the pace along because we were at 30-plus days with no action, no change.
Well, it's my understanding is that you guys had a contract with Motorola and you let it lapse, you guys didn't renew it.
Dispatch, Livingston County Dispatch did.
Okay.
Not, not Brighton Fire. Livingston County Dispatch made the decision. So how that decision came, at least to the fireside, was a couple things. Maintenance of radios is a two-way street. It's not only the infrastructure, so towers, it's also our mobiles and portable radios, this thing, okay? And this thing can get out of tune, it might be a broken antenna, it could be some guts. And so what used to happen, and this is part of the change, we would drive every police car, fire truck to a central point in Livingston County on a given day, and there would be these lines of technicians and every radio would be touched and tuned. And that way, it would be optimized in the system. Clarity, tones, codes, whatever, this is a mini-computer, they would take care of that. They would also maintain our towers. And so when you heard that the towers weren't maintained, the tower maintenance and the tower infrastructure falls on the budget process of Livingston's Central Dispatch, which isn't Brighton Fire. And so when that maintenance kind of came, we, we didn't know that wasn't being done. We just thought they weren't maintaining these anymore.
So what you're saying is that the, the commissioners have done their job and put the money aside, and it was the lack of communication from 911 Dispatch to the Brighton Fire Authority and, and the budgeting, like they didn't communicate with you guys to let them know that everything was, was done and set aside and ready for you guys. You guys were the ones to make the next step, but didn't know because the representative who talks to the commissioners wasn't relaying that information? Is that what you're saying?
I don't know if that's true. I mean, we, so I have to, so there is a technical group, I think Chief Plus, Chief Carroll are part of the technical review of the tower RFP project. And that is that 800 megahertz side project. I am not in those daily things. And so I had to trust what Chief Carroll told us at the Thursday meeting, and I knew up to that point that, you know, because we had asked the question, what is the end goal with the RFP? Is there funding available? And that had been multiple conversations within Livingston County fire chiefs. And I don't think we ever got an answer, and so I had to trust our people. And so Chief Carroll said he was greatly relieved to hear from our three commissioners in the meeting that that funding had been set aside for that topic. Now, in light of the VHF failure, that's where we have learned that it will get maintained. There's a process with Motorola. The first thing they have to do is evaluate the system. And then the second part is, both Livingston County Dispatch and the administrator have advised that they will be going forward with a maintenance contract. I haven't seen it, but I, that's to maintain that, that VHF tower.
Sounds like you need a new representative to speak to the commissioners because the one that has been working isn't doing effective communicating to everybody. So that would probably be my recommendation versus passing a resolution. So I would like to make a motion to terminate this resolution on the agenda because I don't think we need it. I think it's something that the Bafa and the commissioners need to work on.
So in the meeting, Commissioner Fiani...
Sorry, I have a motion on the floor.
Okay.
Just a question.
The clerk would like the motion acted on.
Nobody wants a second?
I do not see a second. Further discussion, please.
Do you have a second? During the meeting, Commissioner Fiani directly invited Chief O'Brien to communicate straight with him, as there did seem to be some disconnect between the, the dispatch who was supposed to be liaising between Chief O'Brien and the commissioners, from what I understand. So that's been resolved. I just want to make sure that, that the chain of command or the food chain or the flowchart or whatever we want to call it is more accurate than Chief needs to communicate better with people.
This resolution, though, makes it sound like the commissioners haven't been doing their job and they have. Now, a miscommunication is different than them avoiding and not doing the job, is my point. They got the money set aside, they've, it's a two-year project they've already been working on.
Yeah, he just said all that stuff.
Yeah, so I don't think we need to do a resolution.
So the issue is twofold. One was the towers, which they related that they're working on and have been working on for two years, and that's moving forward. And that's when Bafa found out that the funding's been set aside for the towers. The VHF is, was a separate issue, there's two separate issues that they were dealing with there, and that one was the one that the commissioners were caught off-guard, not knowing the complexity and the problem, the current problems that were going on, that they are addressing right now.
And they have an appointment October 20th with Motorola.
Are there abouts?
Well, and Supervisor Spire sent out a memo to all of us today, recapping how that meeting went, and I was very pleased, again, on how that meeting went. Rather than approve or throw this resolution out, I think postponing this resolution is a, is a great alternative. That way, it kind of keeps it on the table, active, yet we're not approving anything in, in the hopes that we can just sit back and everything goes as smoothly as was stated in last week's meeting and continues moving forward for what's best for the county.
Everybody walked out of that room on Thursday with a totally different outlook and, and feeling good about the outcome of that meeting.
Absolutely.
So I, I just have a question. So I, I want to look at our agenda. Number four, request consideration, Resolution 251106, related to repair/maintenance, roll call. I'm looking through my packet. Where, which page of our packet is the resolution specific for the Board of Genoa Township to read? I don't see it.
I didn't see it either.
So that is...
But I do see in your letter that says, "After our meeting, we're going to sit back and see if it's even..." Questions about this topic of any time? It sounds like your letter is saying there is no resolution here that we're going to vote on tonight, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so the agenda then is a little bit confused.
There was to be one, written after the meeting, but the meeting went so well that I did not write one.
Okay. But the packet was before the meeting, so I get that. So that's what threw me off there is because the agenda looks like we're going to be voting on it tonight, but the subsequent meeting said, "Maybe not. Let's just," I think, Robin, you said, "Let's just let it smolder a little bit and see if it just fixes itself and we may not even have to vote on a resolution."
We are very encouraged if everybody acts the way they said they were going to act. I will say also that Commissioner Nakagiri has committed to attending the fire chief meetings, and I'm sure he'll work with law enforcement very closely as well. As long as everybody keeps working toward that same end goal, I don't think that we're going to need to pass a resolution at any time.
So, so then I want to go back to Janine's motion. She made a motion that said, "I think we should take this resolution and just cancel it," right, get rid of it, and nobody seconded it. And the reason I didn't is because I didn't see it anywhere in the packet over here, so there was really like, I was reading this, but it's been superseded by something else that happened in person. So there really is no resolution for us to vote on tonight, but the suggestion would be, and then Robin came back and said, "Let's just delay."
Postpone.
Postpone TBD.
There will be no resolution until a resolution is needed.
We didn't ever change the agenda. We have a resolution on...
We can't change the agenda after it's posted, except for at the beginning of the meeting.
On the agenda, so why wouldn't we terminate something that's not there?
Yeah, I think we missed that when, when we went to approve the agenda. We missed that because we should have been on our toes and said, "Number four doesn't exist."
Right, right. Well, that's why I'm asking to terminate.
No, it's a valid question, that's why I was with support, saying it was on the agenda, it was confusing.
It exists in letter form, it is not a formal resolution.
However, by leaving it on the agenda, also it gave Chief O'Brien the opportunity to explain to us his, all the detail that I don't understand, and then Kevin also the opportunity to give the Board the briefing on how their meeting went last week, which, again, sounds like it went very well, and I'm very hopeful.
And I'm glad you guys got it.
I don't want to oversell it and say that we're like halfway to our goal.
So we appreciate that.
Yeah, very, very glad that you guys were able to have the meeting. Are we continuing discussion or, Rick, do you have a point to make?
Well, I think that there wasn't a second on Janine's, but, but Robin had brought up, she would entertain a motion of postponing the decision on the resolution, and if you wanted to...
I can make that a motion.
I will second that motion to postpone it.
Okay, I have a motion to postpone the writing of a resolution, and I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, actually, I'll go ahead and ask for a roll call vote, please. And just so we're clear, a yes vote is, yes, we are going to postpone action on this resolution.
Which may never happen.
Which may never happen. We're going to wait and see what happens, and as long as everybody holds up their end of the bargain, there will never be a resolution. A no vote means you don't want to postpone the resolution.
That doesn't exist.
You want, that doesn't exist. Before we take the roll call, actually, Joe, do you have any legal concerns with anything we have discussed regarding this topic?
I'm a little concerned with the fact that there is no actual language. I guess you could announce the language today, and then Patty would just love typing all of that good stuff out with, you know, something formal later. I mean, that is a possibility, but, you know, the, the real concern is there isn't language for everybody to look at and, you know, ponder. So with the no vote, I'm not sure where you go with that.
So I think we need to make the proper motion and terminate what's on the agenda or vote no for this. We can't postpone something that's not in writing. I mean, this makes no sense why we didn't remove it from the agenda in the first place. So I think that the proper thing to do would be to terminate, like I made the initial motion.
And right now, there is a motion, and so I don't know that, you know, you can vote yes, you can vote no, and then decide what happens later.
All right. What if I amend my motion to postpone a resolution regarding repairs and maintenance? regarding repairs and maintenance and upgrade of radio systems to Livingston County?
Yeah, certainly.
Are you comfortable with adding the letter that I distributed at the table to the record?
Oh, I, absolutely.
As an explanation?
I mean, that's certainly something that could be added to the information.
With the addition of the memo from Supervisor Kevin Spire dated October 6th.
Okay, so I have a problem with this, though, because you throwing something on our chair, you ran on transparency, and throwing something on my chair five minutes before the meeting starts, not transparency.
I did email it this morning.
What made you think that I was able to read that email? And, you know, I had, I was working today, so this, this does not count either.
Luckily, I was not. So, yeah, I was, I was working as well. Okay, well, I think most of the transparency is with the public. The other, as far as I know, the other trustees all received my letter.
I have a voting right as well, I am part of the public.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, so I, let me just recap. I'm getting old, okay? So Janine made a motion to just ax this completely. It wasn't supported, and I explained why I didn't support, because I didn't see it in the pa, there was nothing in the packet to ax. So I'm like, I don't know what to do here. I can't support something or go against it, because it's not there, all right? Then it moved to the stage where Robin makes, we had some discussion. Robin now makes a motion that includes some verbiage about the memo that Kevin, the Supervisor, on October 6th wrote this out. We understood that, from this letter, that we are not going to have a resolution, possibly never, based on the outcome long-term. Everybody following, crossing their fingers and promising, right, to do what they're supposed to do. So Robin now has said, okay, if that's the case, she made a motion to go ahead. And can you repeat that motion, or Patty?
I can.
Postpone a resolution regarding the repair maintenance upgrade of Lincoln County's communication system, with the addition of the memo from Supervisor Spire dated October 6, 2025.
Perfect.
Perhaps it should be postponed consideration of a resolution. Because that's really, we're not postponing the resolution, we're postponing considering it. So I think that is a better phrasing of it, since we don't have it. We're not going to consider it tonight, we're going to postpone considering it to a date in the future.
Perfect, yes, please amend that motion.
And I'll amend a second. Okay, so, any further discussion? Joe, any concerns?
Not for me.
Okay, so, again, a yes vote is postponing any action on the resolution.
Consideration.
Consideration.
Consideration of any resolution regarding this communications issue. And a no vote is not postponing. Roll call, please.
Hunt.
Yes.
Reiber.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Hovarder, yes. Susie.
Yes.
Deaton, no. Spire.
Yes. Okay. Thank you all. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
All of you, thank you very much. Very productive session. Thank you, we'll call you. Action item number five, Kim has been patiently waiting, is the consideration of a request for approval of the proposed 2026 employee benefit pan, plan, as presented by Human Resources Manager Kim Lane.
It's a little hard to talk after all that important stuff going on.
Oh, don't sell yourself short.
Yep, this is very important stuff.
People's lives are at stake with that, so. I thank you for letting me present this to you tonight. I'm bringing forward to you the benefit plan as we have reviewed it for the 2026 healthcare renewal for employees of Genoa Township. This, I don't think you can look very far to see a ton of different headlines on where healthcare is in, in the, the critical nature of it in, in this day and age. The, the, all of these headlines are recent for consideration of hikes that are happening in the healthcare industry. I want to, we met with Hub, who is our broker for our benefits. And what they brought forward to us is a whole bunch of different reasons why healthcare is taking such a huge hit. Even our government, you know, the government shut down, and healthcare is a big part of all of those discussions. In Michigan, we had Henry Ford that bought Ascension and, or Providence. We've had U of M that bought Sparrow. Beaumont and Spectrum joined to form Corwell Health. And what's happening is all of these healthcare industries are combining, and then they are going to the insurance companies, and they're saying, we're not happy with the discounts that you're making us take anymore. Now that there's fewer systems, they have a bigger voice. It's sort of like the, you know, the, you know, there's not enough, not enough different, what's the word I'm looking for?
Competition.
Competition, yes, in the, in the industry. So, so that's one of them. Also, prescription drugs are through the roof. There's been a lot of increase used in GLP-1s for prescriptions. That causes a lot of costs to go up for insurers. For the last several years, Hub has been warning us that large increases are coming. We've been able, as a township, to control a lot of those costs by having a health reimbursement account that is self-funded. And so we, we, it gives us a little bit of control over our plan. We're allowed, allows us to have a high deductible health plan, and then self-insure the parts that are covering what that high, high deductible health plan doesn't cover. And that's been working out really good. Over the last six years, our, our increases have been single-digit, with the exception of one year that was about 10 and a half percent. So this medical healthcare arrangement that we have has been working to keep the costs low, until this year. This year, our Blue Cross Blue Shield renewal came in at 29.7%, which is just not sustainable. So we, it forces us to look at other healthcare providers. Priority Health provided a quote that ended up being more than our Blue Cross Blue Shield PPO. We, we wanted to get quotes from United Healthcare and HAP, but they refused to quote because they would be even higher. What we did get was a quote from Blue Care Network, a point-of-service healthcare plan that quoted a more favorable amount. It's still in the double digits, but it's a lot less than 29.7%.
Kim, I have a question for you on that. I, I appreciate what you're saying here with the dramatic increase. How much effect did MHOG have in pulling out?
That's a part, that's a part of it as well. With, with MHOG, Sewer and Water Authority pulling away from the township, we are age-rated, because we are less than 50 employees, and now the township will have 18 employees.
So if we had MHOG part of that, what would have been the increase? If they had stayed part of it, what, what would have been the increase?
Uh, I don't know, because we quoted, I, I'm not sure. Because we quoted it, we quoted it from the very beginning separately. So, but having the younger force. Having the younger force move with MHOG and an older force.
Go ahead, call us, I'll do that.
Going with the township, that had, that.
My reason, my reason for asking that is, you know, we're not really comparing apples to apples in terms of the current plan versus a new plan. And I'm, and I understand it's going to be higher because age-rated, but I was just curious of what the differential was. If they had, the apples to apples would be, if they were included, how much would have gone up, 8%, 10%, whatever? But because they're not, it's gone up this because of age rating.
It's a better explanation of why.
Right, right, exactly.
Yeah, and that, that's a, that's a part of it. I would, if I had to guess, I would say the Blue Cross would have ended up somewhere in the 15 to 18% range. So, since that, since that's happening and it's moving forward, we have to look at a new plan, a new idea for the township employees. The other thing that we did, that did happen, and it happened in, in, on the MHOG side and the township side, is that we had high claims this year. So our HRA, which is self-funded, cost more for 2025 than it has in previous years. And that's just because people are using the health, healthcare, which is what it's there for. Good thing that we did two years ago was we created a reserve fund for our HRA when it came in under budget. So if we had less claims than what we budgeted for, that surplus of funds got put into a reserve fund. Right now, the township has about $50,000 in this reserve fund to offset anything extra that we might be over at the end of the budget. Where we're budgeting right now, we have good nine-month actuals. The quarter doesn't end until November 30th, so we don't know what that final quarter is for, for costs for the HRA.
We have to bubble wrap everybody.
Pardon me?
We have to bubble wrap everybody.
Bubble wrap everybody, yeah. Nobody fall down. So, you know, right now, I mean, we could still end up right where we budgeted. But it's, you know, it's probably where we're, we might end up where we budgeted and not have money to go into the surplus. If we are a little bit over, then we'll use that surplus to cover it. So, which is, which is good, because that means part of, part of our offsetting of costs for next year is we can leave our budget amount for EHIM or the HRA the same. We don't have to increase our budget for 2026, especially when Blue Cross Blue Shield is already coming in higher. So that helps us sort of, at least in one area, keep something maintained. So my recommendations for 2026 are to move the employees to the Blue Care Network Point of Service. The impact that this will have on the employees is they're moving to more of a managed healthcare, but the point-of-service plan allows them to not need a referral if they have to go to a specialist. It also allows them to, they don't, oh, they can go out of network. Or if they need care out of the state of Michigan, they do not need, it's still considered in network. They don't have to go out of network for that. So that's two pretty important features of the point-of-service plan. Now, the network is about 10% smaller, so people will have to look and see if their doctors that they currently go to are still in the Blue Care Network plan. Kelly and I looked at some Trinity Health doctors and some University of Michigan doctors. I've had a couple of feedback from some employees today that they've looked up and their doctors are in Blue Care Network. So I think this is a good viable option for employees without disrupting too much of their, of their healthcare.
There was one today that her doctor is not in it.
Oh, okay. Well, we knew that, we knew that there was a percentage of people of 18.
Employees have the right to stay on the current plan that they have at their cost, though, correct?
That's part of, that's part of my recommendation, yes. We have the ability to continue the PPO plan, and it can be just for one person or two people, but they would pay a higher employee contribution for the difference between what Genoa Township is subsidizing for the Blue Care Network and being on the PPO plan. Our, our Delta Dental and our ancillary benefits with Mutual of Omaha, so our life and our disability insurances, they are staying the same. Dental came in at 5.5%, which is pretty typical for them. They would not give us a two-year rate guarantee. I asked for that for this year. They were gonna, they could do it, but they were going to increase the cost for us to do a two-year rate guarantee. I said, then that's not a two-year rate guarantee. So it's 5.5. I didn't want to raise it 11. It, it just didn't make sense for, especially for this year, when things are so high. There is a high possibility that we could have a second year, depending on how things go in the healthcare industry for next year. So, you know, I'd, I'd like to save increasing the EHIM or the, the HRA funds and that for when we absolutely have to do that, so. So I did give information, there's a chart on the next page that shows the, the cost difference between the PPO plan and the point-of-service plan. By going with the point-of-service, it's a net of 11.87% increase rather than 22%. So it's a significant, it's a significant amount of savings. And that is after, you know, we, we take into account the contributions that the employees would put in. Right now, we have 11, 12 employees that are taking advantage of the plan of, of the 18. Does that make sense? Yes. Because we have a couple of part-time employees, and then we have some that are opting out, so. So it's, it's not even everybody that's on the plan. The other thing we did talk about is we do have, you know, at least one employee that has already expressed a desire to retire for next year. So I think these costs might go down a little bit, depending on, you know, it's always, it's always kind of a crazy thing, you know, we're not allowed to discriminate in our hiring, you know, based on age. But likely, we would not hire somebody who's ready to retire to replace the person who is retiring. So age-wise, they would be younger, which would bring costs down, because we're age-rated, so.
Have you looked on, like, partnering with another township or something to get the cost down?
We have. There is something called a composite, and a composite would be putting everybody into a pool that would be part of a larger, it would make us a large employer, part of a large employer type of thing, where it moves away from being age-rated into a large, you know, you can get claims experience for prescriptions and, you know, healthcare claims and all of that. What I've learned is that a lot of the organizations that put all of their people together are the people that have high claims. We could very possibly get in for a lower cost this year, and then next year, we're part of all of those large claims. So then, who knows where, I think we lose some of our ability to control the costs if we go into one of those pools.
A little bit of, too much of a gamble.
Yeah.
They buy into their problems, too.
Yes, that's exactly what we're purchasing.
Some states have, in their insurance laws, have the ability for the insurance companies to exclude certain people from their benefits. So you can have a policy and you exclude them, well, if they have that type of policy, then they, they're also requiring those insurance companies to, to opt into a state pool, and those people can get coverage there, but their premium is astronomical. So they'll keep it low for the, those that are healthy, and then if you've got someone that's, they want to exclude, they're in the state pool, and they pay a bunch, but Michigan doesn't do that.
The whole insurance industry, right? Yeah, we're betting against ourselves.
Right.
And we're, you know, life insurance companies don't want to, don't want to insure sick people, because they don't want to pay the claims out, so.
Well, why I brought that up is I'm part of the HAPR board. I'm on the HAPR board, and actually, Nick here told me that the county has insurance, and HAPR could have partnered with them to get their insurance cost down. You know, Livingston County?
Yeah. I, I don't know.
We're, I don't, I don't believe that we're able to jump in on their plan, but we did. We're, I don't, I don't believe that we're able to jump in on their plan, but, um, we did reach, so whenever that first increase came out before we learned about the, the point-of-service plan, um, I reached out to a gentleman I know that's in the industry. And Kim and I met with him, um, his team. And we looked at a few things, uh, so any of the Blues are gonna be the same price, no matter who you get them from. Kind of like Sony, when you go to buy a Sony product and nobody can discount it. That's how the Blues work. They were interested in kind of pushing us towards priority health.
It's actually any healthcare plan with, for less than fifty employees.
Yeah.
So, it's all age member, age, age member related. So, the costs are the same. So, Blue Cross, Blue Cross quoted from this company is gonna be the same as Blue Cross quoted from this company or this company, whichever broker that you use. They're, they're all gonna be the same, and that, that particular company-
They did express a desire to look at priority help, but we simply told them, unless it's going to be a significant savings, we're not looking to change our, our employees' healthcare. And they never got back to us, so I'm going to assume it was not a significant savings. But we did try, um, as we have to. It just, there aren't a ton of options out there.
And Kim puts a ton of time and effort into this and works with Hub, and there is-
And I talked to our, um, we have a, our broker that does our retirement plan. He also is a broker for benefits as well. And, um, he's very well-respected in, in the township, and I can get free advice from him. It doesn't cost him anything because we don't use him for our benefits. He has had a couple of municipalities under him move over to the Blue Care Network plan, and everybody's been very happy with it. It's brought costs down, and, um, so I think, I think this is a really good option for, for the township employees. Plus, if there are prescriptions that, that aren't in the formulary for Blue Care Network, if their doctor that they really truly love is not in the Blue Care Network, they can buy up to the other option. It's expensive, but it's just deciding on where you want to put your money, upfront or on the back end, so.
Kim, do they have a time limit to do this? Is it only during open enrollment?
Mm-hmm, unless they have a, um, qualifying event.
Event, yeah.
Yeah. So it would have to be a marriage or a death, or the birth of a child, or something along those lines, to be a qualifying event during the year. And our benefit renewal is twelve-one, so in order to, um, get this moving, you know, with, especially with moving employees to a new network, they need a good, you know, six weeks or eight weeks. So, I'm seeking your approval on it tonight so that we can get going on it.
Okay, does anybody have any additional questions for Kim?
No, I just thank you for all the work you put into this. It's, it is a lot, and I know you work hard to get the best you can for the staff, and, and they appreciate it, as do I.
Thank you.
So I will move to approve the 2026 Employee Benefit Plan as presented by the Human Resource Manager.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I would request all those in favor, actually, that's right. No, I would request all those in favor to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you very much.
Sorry to keep you out so late.
Oh, that's okay. That is all right. Thank you so much.
Moving on, we have action item number six, which is the consideration of a recommendation for approval of ordinance number Z two-five-zero-six related to zoning ordinance text amendments to Article twenty-one entitled Administration and Enforcement. Specifically, this is, uh, section one, twenty-one oh-five oh-five posting, and twenty-one oh-six, um, adding moratoriums. That's a new one.
Correct, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so before you this evening for your consideration is a ordinance for zoning text amendments. These text amendments involve Article twenty-one, which is the administration section of our zoning ordinance. Um, there are two changes. The first is a property posting requirement, which would require that any, um, residential plat or site condominium development, any rezoning or special land use that is proposed in the township would be required to erect a sign that is in a visible location to motorists, including information about, um, the proposed project, and also including details about, um, who to contact in the event that people have questions. You know, we hear all the time from people that, um, you know, why wasn't I notified about this? How did I not know? State law only requires that we send notice to those within three hundred feet, and, um, we know that just because you don't live within three hundred feet doesn't mean you don't care about development that's happening in your community. So this would give an opportunity, um, for us to make sure that people who drive by locations or live near, but maybe not within three hundred feet, would be notified of sort of major development changes in their area. The second item, uh, within Art, Article twenty-one is a new section, section twenty-one oh-six for moratoriums. Um, so a moratorium is a temporary pause on a particular, um, land use or process in the community. Moratoriums can only be enacted, um, when there is a legitimate public health, safety, welfare purpose. Um, it is something that we do very infrequently in the community, but there are times when a moratorium is needed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. So this proposes to amend the zoning ordinance to put forth a process for adapting a moratorium. Um, it would require that the board adopt a resolution to enact a moratorium. By including this in our zoning ordinance, I think it's creating a time savings because in the past, we would have to do an, an ordinance plus a resolution, which would require more red tape. So this way, once it's in our zoning ordinance, the board can just adopt a resolution, which we have one, um, later on in the, in the meeting agenda tonight for that. But I'm, we are seeking your approval for these amendments. They have both been recommended for approval by the County Planning Commission and the Township Planning Commission.
I think they're both great ideas. Um, I know Deb had made a comment about the phone number. It's really hard to tell in this little box how big it is, but I'm guessing you guys will work with the sign company and make sure it's legible, correct?
Yeah.
More robust.
I mean, we can, we can change the ordinance that's proposed to make those letters bigger. We did include a section I that says the design and location shall be approved by the township prior to installation so that we can ensure it's legible, um, but, I mean-
The other thing to point out, though, is that the number is actually our number. They're calling us to, to speak to the planning department. So, okay, yeah.
Yep.
At least they don't have to look up private numbers of, you know, different people.
This is something that Genoa Township will be providing and putting up ourselves, or this is something that will be added to the fee to the application process?
Uh, this is a requirement of the applicant. Um, we will not be collecting any fees. The cost will solely be borne by the individual that is seeking to petition the township to make a change to their property.
You'll just approve the layout?
We will approve the format of it and, um, you know, tell them where it should go, help them with all of that, but they have to pay for it a hundred percent themselves.
Perfect.
Just, just a question, um, I don't know, because I didn't read this, but is this a double-sided sign? If I'm coming east and west, I get to see it, or is this one you just face the road?
You know, it has to be in the most visible location, um, so I guess it depends on the format of it. My thought process was that it would be a two-sided sign. We can specify that if you'd like to add that. That's not a bad suggestion.
I was just thinking, you know, because-
It says a sign for each road frontage shall be provided, so if-
So if you're in a corner, you're gonna get a sign over here and a sign over here?
With view.
Because it's both.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's how I read it.
Correct. It's for, so if you're, you know, if you're at the development at Grand River and Door Road, you would have to put one sign at Grand River and one sign at Door Road. Whether or not those signs are placed perpendicular to the roadway with two sides or parallel with the roadway, it's not specified in the ordinance, so I think they could do either.
Joe, do you see any issues with this, or do you think that this is, um, okay to pass as written?
I, I think it's a great idea. Another communities have a very similar ordinance. Some communities actually have their own sign that they, you know, provide, some with cost, some without cost. The only change that I suggest is under E, where it says the sign shall be removed within seven days after final approval. I suggest it should be after final decision because you may very well not approve, uh, a rezoning or special land use.
Great catch.
That is a good one.
Excellent, thank you.
That's why he makes the big bucks, all right.
That is a good one.
I didn't catch it.
Any further questions?
So, every sign that goes up comes before the board for approval?
No, it was administrative approval.
Okay, so is that our admin board?
No, it would just be staff. The zoning official would be reviewing it, or the planning director.
Okay.
Sometimes people have-
I'm comfortable with that.
By right, you know, they don't have to come before it. They, they're, they already meet what they're allowed to do.
I just wondered who's gonna make the final decision.
Yep.
Yeah, so procedurally, the way I envision this working is that when Amy receives an application for a rezoning, special use, or residential development, she'll work directly with that applicant to say, here are the sign requirements. You are required to put up a sign, um, and then submit it to her for her approval before it gets posted on the property.
And this will not relieve us of the, the mail notification, um, you know, notification by mail of residents within three hundred feet?
Correct.
That will still have to happen. This just informs people. Before, those were the only people that knew. And if they didn't tell anyone, then nobody knew. Uh, this is, this is sort of a mini billboard, so that it says, hey,
It's gay.
This is being proposed. What say you? Okay.
I, I know our zoning is weird. It'll be like LDR. You know, like a three-letter code that'll say low-density residential. Is this gonna, is this gonna use some acronym that you need a decoder ring for, or is this gonna be spelled out?
I mean, it de, it definitely will in terms of zoning, right? Our, our zoning is condensed into letters, so I think you will see current zoning ag, proposed zoning LDR. Um, that's why it's important the phone number be included on that, so folks can give us a call and learn more about it if they're interested.
And we will be able to hit, hit some, push some information out there, explaining where they can find those definitions. They're straight in our zoning ordinance, as to what each one is, what is allowed.
Okay.
So, that information will be, you know, easy for people to find, and we'll, we'll actually do our best to get it out there so they don't have to look for it.
Good work.
So with that, I would entertain a motion on action item number six.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number Z twenty-five oh-zero-six related to zoning ordinance text amendments to Article twenty-one entitled Administration and Enforcement.
As amended.
As amended.
Yeah.
What was the amendment?
The amendment was, Joe, to change approval to decision.
To final decision.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Okay. I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I would ask the clerk for a roll call, please.
Uh, Susie.
Yes.
Hovarder.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Reiber.
Yes.
Hunt.
Yes.
Spiker.
Yes.
Deaton, yes.
Okay. Resolution passes. Um, moving on, action item number seven.
And since that got approved, here we are.
There we are. Consideration of Resolution two-five-one-zero-zero-six B, as in boy, to establish a twelve-month moratorium on the review and approval of rezoning applications in order to allow for updates to the master plan and future land use map, uh, to be considered.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, um, it just so happens, we just adopted a new zoning ordinance amendment that will allow for the township board to, um, adopt resolutions of moratorium. And I have before you this evening prepared a resolution of moratorium for rezoning applications within the township for a period of twelve months. As you all know, we have been working very hard on, um, master plan updates. Most recently, that's involved creating survey questions that, um, have, it, it's become a very big project, but we have a list of survey questions right now that we're finalizing, um, that are outstanding, that are going to really, um, do a good job, I think, hearing from our citizens and our residents, exactly what they want to see in the community. And any rezoning application that comes before the township is going to be considered, um, first and foremost, on the comparison to what our future land use map is. And while we're in the process of updating the future land use map and the master plan, I think the community would be in a very difficult position to consider zoning changes, not knowing how the future land use map will be impacted by the master plan update. So I have prepared this moratorium. Um, it would, basically would put a pause on any applications or reviews for rezoning for a period of twelve months while we are in the process of updating the master plan.
Do you think the master plan will be completed within twelve months? Is this a significant enough time?
I, I hope so. Um, there is a provision that would allow for a six-month extension. So if twelve months goes by and we're close but not quite there, um, we can come back to the board and ask for an extension of that. But it would be, that would be it. So the way the ordinance that you just adopted is written, um, there's one six-month extension. So in no case can this go beyond twel, uh, eighteen months.
Do you have the, um, updated timeframe for the master plan survey?
I do, I don't have an exact time. I can tell you that it's in final formatting stage right now, and we hope to have it out very soon.
We told the provider October first was our desired goal. Um, we've missed that by a little bit, but the questions are a little more in-depth than what they're used to, so, um, there's some, uh, encryption and making sure people don't stack the deck and fill out multiple surveys that we're working through as well. So, um, there's a few final details so that we can get, uh, really good feedback that is accurate and, uh, would stand up to a challenge. Uh, real quick, um, Joe, anything you would like to say regarding this resolution, uh, that we are considering? Positives, negatives, concerns?
Here is a practical question, um, and I, uh, is, if I have, like, agriculture and I want to rezone it to low density, I can't do that for a year, the way it's being written.
Correct.
Now, is that really an issue, though, um, for the township? I mean, do you have large tracts of land that, um, might come up for something like that?
To me, the bigger issue is if you have a large tract of agricultural land and you're looking at changing it to something else, us wanting to make sure that we get that right, that we make a decision based on solid, grounded, future land use planning and master plan to make sure that we're not changing it to something that the community doesn't want to see.
And, and so as to not target a pers, uh, particular thing, it's just a moratorium?
It, it is proposed to be township-wide, um, recognizing that it could potentially impact commercial landowners, industrial landowners. But at, at this point, we, we don't, we haven't heard from the community what they want to see. So it would be very difficult for us to consider zoning changes, not knowing, um, if, if what is in the current plan is going to still be what is in the plan twelve months from now.
Yeah, it's difficult for us to sit here and pick and choose what areas to apply it to, too, so it should be township-wide.
That's what I meant.
Yes.
And from what we've heard, there does appear to be a desire for some pretty significant changes. But we will not know what those are until the survey results, and, and then the workshops, you know, it's, it's a multi-tiered, uh, situation to arrive at, at the information, but, um, our goal is to collect some pretty significant feedback that we think will represent, uh, the true wishes of, uh, the residents.
Let me ask if the survey by some small miracle gets done faster, can this be rescinded?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and I think there is language in here about that, um, whichever comes first. So it says the moratorium is for twelve months, or until the township board adopts its updated master plan, including the future land use map, whichever occurs first.
Okay.
Do you see any issues, Joe, with this for the landowners? I mean, is this pretty typical of somebody doing this while they're developing a master plan?
I have not seen it during a master plan, um, but again, I have not seen the, uh, public comments about, you know, certain tracts, and it's not limited just to, uh, one particular track on Latsen Road. and it's not limited just to, uh, one particular track or, on Latson Road. Uh, we've had uh, comments about a number of different, uh, areas within the township. So, to answer your question, is it typical? No, I've not seen that. Uh, but then again, I haven't seen, um, the public, uh, speaking out about how it would like to shape its, its township. Does that answer your question, or no? You have a quizzical look.
I'm, I'm just thinking.
I think, I, I definitely think it's, any moratorium is not without risk, right? This is something we're, we're telling property owners that they can ask us a question about how they can future use their land, um.
And that is kind of a problem. That's what I'm kind of thinking, that, you know, it's like you bought this land and, you know, you no longer want it or something, or you want it, you're having something else in mind, and we're telling people
Well, they bought the land zoned a certain way, and that's the only thing they're guaranteed, is that that land is zoned that way. Any changes? Uh, you know, if the master plan is there, they can suggest that it was intended to be used differently. But if that master plan changes, then that intent changes.
Correct.
So.
But this is only for new applications.
This is
Correct.
And this won't slow down if there are any current rezoning.
Correct, correct, correct. Well, I'm, the realtor side of me
Exactly.
is like, okay, so I bought this property and now all of a sudden I'm feeling like I wanna split it and I wanna do this, and we're saying, eh, sorry.
What we're, I think we're saying,
Don't buy it.
Hold on, and also, join us in this process of updating our master plan. So you bought your, you own your land, you have expectations, you have desires, come with us, let's figure out where we're going with our plan. Um, a- and then at the end of that process, we'll make a decision about the future land use of your land. Any resident that I'm dealing with that's looking at a rezoning of their property, we're talking about the master plan, and get involved in the process. If you have hopes or dreams or aspirations for your land, you need to have a seat at the table talking about this master plan moving forward, because that's going to set up how you're able to use it long-term. So while we are making them take a pause on that, I think we're also giving them a process to be involved in, which I would hope would offset the sting a little bit of having to wait twelve months.
Do we, do we have the updated time? I know I already asked this, but I just wanna be sure. How long do you think that this master plan will take?
They're typically thirteen months, and we've already started. Now granted, we will probably exceed the thirteen months due to the detail of our survey.
But we sent that out when, like,
How much so? I don't know.
So I mean, we finalized
March or April?
Yeah, I mean, we, we finalized sort of the public engagement strategy in the spring. Um, admittedly, the survey has sort of taken way more time than I think any of us expected it to. Um, but it's also become a more critical piece of our information gathering than I think any survey that I've ever done. Um, so once that goes live, which should be very soon, um, I would think we're looking at a couple of months for that. Um, and that's really gonna be the framework that we're gonna launch forward and do workshops and some other things. So, do I think it's gonna be six months? No, I don't. I think it's probably going to take all of the twelve months to get the master plan adopted. Um, I hope that it's sooner than that, but I don't think any of us wanna take shortcuts in terms of
We do not.
public engagement and making sure that we've got a good investment in the plan and that the community's invested in the plan.
I think the simple answer is that, you know, is this bulletproof? Absolutely not. You can sue anyone at any time you want. You could get sued. I think there's strong legal precedent, or at least strong arguments to be made, that this was the right action to take, given anticipated changes.
I agree that, to everything that you say, and, you know, if it's, it's across the board, that is certainly better than targeting for a particular, uh, zoning classification. You certainly cannot target a particular pr- uh, property or properties. You can't do that.
Uh, so I have a question here, um, twenty-one oh six oh one, the last sentence says, uh, provisions of the master plan or zoning ordinance to regulate existing or emerging land uses that may impact the health, safety, or welfare of township residents or property. So that's kind of limiting you to where this moratorium, you know, why you would enact this moratorium. It's for safety, health, and welfare. Um, and my question was, I just don't want another car wash. Can I single out a car wash and say, you're, we're not accepting any applications for car wash for eighteen months?
You cannot. Well, Joe, I'll let you answer that.
Yeah, you can't target a particular business or a particular property or a particular industry. If it fits within whatever the zoning, um, classifications are, well, you may not necessarily like it, but if it's a permitted use, it's a permitted use. You can only say no to something on the basis that the ordinance sets forth our basis. So if they say, you know, this piece of property is zoned for a car wash, well, saying I don't like car washes isn't going to be a supportable reason.
That would be arbitrary.
We're not able to pick the winners. I learned it from you. Uh, you know, I do think that particular, uh, industry, let's call it, is probably evening itself out. I doubt there's too many more players looking to jump into an already fairly saturated market, but unfortunately, we're, it's not up to us to say, no, your lifetime dream was to own a car wash in Genoa Township, but we're not going to allow you to do that as long as it meets the existing zoning. So, I appreciate the effort. It's not that we don't support the idea.
Okay.
Okay, any further questions? With that, I would entertain a motion on Resolution two-five-one zero-zero-six B.
I'll move to, uh, approve Resolution two-five-one zero-zero-six B to establish a twelve-month moratorium on a review and approval rezoning applications in order to allow for updates to the master plan and future land use map.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? May I get a roll call, please?
Hunt?
Yes.
Reiber?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hovarder?
Yes.
Susie?
Yes.
Deaton, yes. Spiker?
Yes. Okay, motion carried. Action item number eight is the consideration of a request for approval of a citizen enrichment training program to be offered in partnership with the Livingston County Sheriff's Department, as presented by trustee Bill Reiber.
You're on, go, Bill.
Hi, everybody. So we had talked about this in discussion a couple of times, uh, prior to this. Um, I've been in contact with Livingston County Sheriff's Office Lieutenant, uh, Matt Young. Um, and, uh, so he's, he's been my main point contact, uh, with that organization. Uh, the Livingston County Sheriff's, uh, Office offers free training courses, um, to, uh, to citizens of Livingston County. Um, so I went through and he, he sent me a menu of what types of training that they have. Uh, we've been kinda negotiating and working both with availability of the facility here at the Township Hall. Uh, the plan is to have the, the training right here, in, in this, in this room right here. We would utilize the fourth Monday of each month, because it's not trustees, it's not the planning commission. Um, the, the rain or delay or weather data increment, you know, the alternate day would be the next day. Um, again, this would be free of charge from, uh, Livingston County Sheriff's Office. Uh, it's a good opportunity for them to make some, some good waves in the, within the public, you know, to get some support, get some kudos there. Um, we, we took out a, we took out a class that they do offer, which was Places of Worship Security Analysis. That's more of an onsite thing. They actually have to go to that building and, and do a walk-around. Um, we also took out a, uh, the December, uh, training date being very close to Christmas, probably not much participation on December twenty-second. Um, and then just based on, um, just word-of-mouth popularity, it seems that the CPR AED uh, use course would be the most popular, the most high demand. So what you see before you is a proposed calendar of events with the, the date, uh, the type of training being offered, the maximum class size, and the estimated duration for each of those training sessions. CPR AED is, uh, is limited because they have five trainers, and each trainer can only take on six students at a time. So you can see that's a, a max class size of thirty. Um, that, if you wanted to go ahead and take the full course and, and get a certification card, uh, that's available. That's why that's an extra-long course. It's three to four hours. Um, I would propose that the, the township go ahead and cover the five-dollar cost for each resident that wants to go all the way to get the certificate. Um, it would be a signup sheet, first come, first served, with priority given to residents of Genoa Township. But obviously, if we don't have enough, we're gonna open it up to try to fill the classes. Um, there's also a coffee with a cop where residents can come in, meet, meet with officers, or deputies, I should say, uh, and just ask him any kind of questions that they want about ordinances, laws, procedures, and things like that. Uh, and yes, we would have coffee, yes, we would have donuts. Uh, that would take place here at the Township Hall as well for a couple of hours. Um, and I'm just asking for the board to consider approving, um, facilitating these courses right here.
Real quick, you have a budget for it? Oh, you're just, you're saying that we're gonna have coffee and co- donuts and, and spite, and you're asking the township to pay five dollars a person?
Community enrichment.
Okay, that's where your budget's going from.
Yeah, our, our community service, yes, our community outreach.
Outreach, alright. We can, uh, attach a cost not to exceed, if we would like to do that? Have you figured out what it might be, Bill? I've, I was One fifty times three for the CPR, so seven fifty, and then, uh, you know, some of us are larger fellows, so we better allow a little extra for the donuts. How about we, how about we say eight fifty total max, uh, expenditure on this entire program, and I don't think that we will.
Well, it's only the CPR that's gonna cost five dollars.
Five, five times thirty is one fifty. Um, five dollars times thirty, so one fifty times three. Oh, wait, that's four fifty. Yeah, I did my math wrong. Uh, it's late, somebody's keeping me out past my bedtime. So four fifty plus, let's call it fifty dollars for donuts, so let's, uh, let's, uh, I like our donuts.
You get one dozen? Come on, man. It's about what they run nowadays.
You pack, it's your program. I'm just throwing out numbers for you to consider. Uh, I, I do think we should establish, though, uh, we'll set up a signup like we did for the, um, planning and zoning for everyone online. However, if there are, uh, elderly residents who are unable to access that program and would like to participate, they can either come in or email me at supervisor@genoa.org, um, or call, and we will help get them registered online.
Yeah.
But that'll be the best way to control those class sizes.
Uh, I would say not to exceed one thousand dollars.
Okay.
And you'll definitely come in under that.
Always go safe.
Well, that's fine. Um, given that, we best, uh, entertain a motion.
I make a motion. I make a motion that the Board of Trustees go ahead and approve the proposed, uh, training agenda, the citizens' written training schedule as posted right here, uh, with a cost not to exceed one thousand dollars. Date stipulated here with makeup dates, day after, on premises here at the Township Hall.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion?
Can I just ask one quick question? For the, uh, AED events, three to four hours, so you're talking six P M. to ten P M. Um, just staffing of that, keeping the building open, um, I didn't know what the thoughts were on, sort of
One of us will have to be here to close the building, see people out. So we could, we can alternate. I'll, I'll take a shift.
Okay.
Well, and are we paying per diems for these, for trustees that come, 'cause then your thousand could be in trouble.
Yeah. I, I, I guess this is optional, it's not a required thing. So, my head is saying, if you show up, you're a resident showing up to take the training, and you're just like everybody else.
But you're not, but you're not
No per diem.
locking the building up. Someone, someone, we're gonna have to pay someone to be here to, to close up the building.
Not, not if you're already here, taking the class.
You take one, I'll take one. Um, you know, we just need one more person to take one. I, I counted you. I figured it's your program.
I'll do the coffee with the cop.
Are you gonna lock the doors at eleven-thirty so nobody can come in?
Alright, we can figure out the logistics. I just wanted to have an expectation if I was finding someone from staff, um, and having to pay overtime for this, or, or not, so.
We can work it out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So a motion and a second.
We do have a motion and a second. We're following along on our discussion. Uh, is discussion closed? So, I would ask for all those
One, one question. So, we talked about posting this, maybe putting some posters out in the lobby and everything. I'm just assuming that the cost of posting this on the website is free?
Yes.
Okay.
Next door, Facebook, all that stuff, the app.
And the app.
We'll hit it hard.
Alright.
And the app.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
So I'd ask all those, uh, in favor of the citizen enrichment training schedule and program not to exceed a thousand dollars, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose the same? Motion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion.
That's great, great idea.
Alright, action item number nine is the review of fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, first quarter budget to actual report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So there's no action on this item tonight. This is just as fiduciaries of the township, um, keeping you up to date on, uh, budget to actual reports. So this is your first quarter budget to actual report. Um, small explanation needed just for the fact that you're getting the, uh, ended-in-June report in, uh, the beginning of October. Um, the first quarter budget to actual is always a bit delayed because we have to get through the audit process and closing out the prior fiscal year. Um, and in addition to that, moving forward, um, when the, when the quarter ends, we have to wait for bills to sort of continue to trickle in for the next thirty to sixty days. Sometimes we get bills, uh, you know, a month after the activity has occurred. So we will get these to you in, in a quicker, um, format moving forward for quarters two and three. Um, but I just wanted to point out that that is why you're getting this first quarter report so late. Um, and then just a quick, um, note that in the spreadsheet that's included in your packet, the column on the far right shows the percent budget remaining. So the target that we're looking for is that we haven't spent more than twenty-five percent of the budget. So we're looking at numbers to be right around seventy-five percent budget remaining after the first quarter. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on this, um, either this evening or, um, anytime, you know, during business hours. And that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Moving on, correspondence. And I did receive a letter, uh, from Miss Juanita Jones. Um, and she was disappointed that we did not make the, um, vouchers for the Brighton Senior Center retroactive. Um, that, that had to do with the, um, immense issue of trying to issue refunds, check by check, to individual people. Um, we could actually end up having to get information from them. Um, in a perfect world, we could've gotten it all done by July first, but we weren't able to. Uh, but the good news is, next year, when it's renewal time, if we decide to renew this program, you will be able to come in and get your renewal covered with a voucher.
They can actually do it the way that we have it set up. So, July first is the renewal, but June first, they have to start getting payment. The dues are due by July first. So everybody coming in, in between June first and June thirtieth can be issued a twenty-six, twenty-seven voucher.
Excellent.
So, we found that out. So right now, um, I'm, our department has created the voucher. We've already issued thirty-five of them. Wow. Um, so we had to resend a check to the Brighton Senior Center today. We had to cut them another check. And, um, we did have to put specific dates on them. This one, the current people are for the twenty-five, twenty-six, um, year. And then I, I tell these people that are disappointed about, 'cause I, I get probably about three people a day. that wanted to be backdated for the twenty-five dollars they already paid. But I told them that they, if they come in in June, I will get them one for the following year and to make sure that they come here and not go to the senior center and, um, make a payment. So they, they, they seemed happy about that, so.
Good.
We do apologize, but the logistics, uh, were not in, in favor of conscious consciousness or ease of, uh, application. Now, was there any other correspondence?
Uh, there's one, um, that I'll let Janine talk about. I did just want to cycle back. I put a letter that we received from Sheriff Murphy in the presentation item from Sheriff Murphy, thinking he may mention it. He didn't, so I just want to draw attention to you. Uh, packet page twenty just included a public statement from Sheriff Murphy, um, thanking the township for the support with the, um, LPR cameras. And then the, this is a clerk's, clerk's item. I know she was excited to tell you about.
We'll, we'll let that be a member update. Clerk?
Um, these little suitcases are not suitcases. They are a generous donation by Hamburg Township with the, um, my deputy clerk, Tabitha, was able to, um, work with Hamburg Township on the donation. These are voting booths, stand-up voting booths, and this is what they look like, all assembled. And we have seventy-two that were donated to us because they got our grant to receive new voting booths. And rather than them dispose of them, we were, um, gifted these voting booths at no cost.
Oh, that's great.
Excellent. Thank you, Hamburg.
Yeah, thank you.
How many, uh, voting booths did we have prior to this?
None. We had a couple handicap-accessible ones, but most of them were the sit-down, um.
Like a paper divider.
Paper dividers.
Like a cardboard thing.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
No, that's great.
Cool. This would be a nice option.
Yep, so if people want to stand, um, I, actually, you know, I, I believe that we did get a couple for early voting last year. But, um, this is going to make a significant difference, so we'll have more space. We did condense it to the six precincts, so, um, in doing that as well, I have to tell you that, I know this is not under member updates, but I'm talking about it now. Um, I was able to return, um, seven tabulators, and they said it was going to be impossible for me to do an end-of-life or termination agreement on them, but I worked with Heart Voting Systems, and I'm saving the township three thousand dollars a year on maintenance fees.
Oh, good.
Excellent.
Nice.
Good.
Good work.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other member updates?
We know they're working on outdoor pickleball court, courts at the Osceola Building over there. So there's construction all behind there with parking lots and all this stuff over there. And I guess they had a water main break, and they were grateful to M-Hog for coming to help. Because it was like a Friday night, so I thought, I should try.
We did, we did hear about that.
Yes, we did.
But they were, you know, really appreciative of that support they got from them. So I said, pass it along.
I don't know that any others of us met since the last meeting, so that should conclude member updates. Uh, any board comments?
Um, I want to recognize that, uh, Commissioner Fiani is here, uh, and I don't know if he had wanted to add anything. We had lots of discussions earlier about the meeting we had last Thursday, and that your enthusiastic support of what's going on and your commitment to, um, uh, solving the problems and getting you on top of it, if you want to add anything to that, please, is that okay with you?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you. Um, sorry I was delayed getting here. I had a commissioner committee meeting. But, um, as, uh, I'm hopeful Chief O'Brien and Sheriff Murphy, uh, were able to relay, uh, the board commissioners and myself became aware of the eight-hundred megahertz communication tower issue in November of twenty-twenty-three. Um, that is a completely separate item from the recent issue that took place in mid-August. The mid-August issue pertains strictly to the VHF system. In regard to the eight-hundred megahertz tower project, uh, the board and myself have been diligently reviewing options and proposals. It took probably, well, we're still working on it, but, um, it took about a year and a half to secure, uh, three property locations to place these towers. Uh, it was in the springtime that we went forward and proposed, uh, doing a, uh, extensive exhaustive RFP, request for a proposal. At that time, uh, our administrators and myself and the board worked with the, uh, state of Michigan, actually, to make sure that we had all the specs and we were in compliance with the, uh, state of Michigan standards. Uh, in doing so, we, uh, put out this RFP, and it actually recently closed in August. And we had a handful of, uh, contractors, vendors, suppliers, uh, bid on it. That has been since August, uh, under review by the Public Safety Leadership Committee, where they had the opportunity to fully evaluate and vet the, uh, proposals that were, uh, uh, provided to the county. Now, one thing that makes this project very unique is there's a very specific set of standards because as a county as a whole, we want to make sure that we're in sync with the rest of the state of Michigan. We don't want to go off and be essentially on an island. So that's what makes this project just that much more complex. In addition, the project as a whole is north of ten million dollars. In fact, it's actually closer to fifteen million dollars. Again, I want to reiterate, though, that's a whole separate problem that the board has been working on for about two years since we actually first came aware of it. Going back to the VHF system, that is a unique, very specific scenario that came to light to the board of commissioners, uh, thanks to Supervisor Spire organizing a meeting last Thursday. Prior to last Thursday, the board and myself were not aware of this VHF issue. It was the, it was relayed to me, uh, through the, uh, Fire Chiefs, Chief O'Brien and Chief Carroll, that they had been in touch with our central dispatch leadership team. Those communications, uh, through no fault of the teams, were never, uh, transcended to the board of commissioners. So understandably, there was some frustration on the part of the local fire departments because their main source of paging had a malfunction. And then the backup system for paging also had a malfunction. Again, this is what transpired in mid-August. To complicate the matter even further, when it was requested for Motorola to come out as our vendor to fix this issue, the actual person who's familiar and typically assigned to Livingston County actually sadly passed away recently. So now we're a short personnel, but they were short of the individual who's most familiar with this system. So we, as a county, uh, got placed, you know, essentially in line for service, and they said they will be out here the week of October twentieth. Again, the board of commissioners had no idea that there was going to be such a, a gap. We weren't familiar, actually, with this issue. Fortunately, I was able to get in touch with Motorola, I believe it was this past Friday. Um, they said, uh, after speaking with them, they said they are going to do everything they can to expedite the process and try to make their way out here sooner. Uh, there's a general idea of what the issue is. It's just a matter of very specifically, uh, tracking it, determining what it is in terms of what needs to be done to completely relieve the issue. Uh, you know, beyond that, uh, I would emphasize that it's been a, uh, a good process so far in terms of working with public safety, uh, the EMS team, the, uh, fire team, the, uh, Sheriff's Department. And the board's certainly doing everything they can to not only financially support this system, but also, uh, remove any impediments or, or barriers that may be involved. I did express to, uh, Chief Carroll and Chief, uh, O'Brien my severe frustration, uh, in terms of being out of the loop. Uh, they, they certainly recognized it, and I'm sure, uh, Trustee Walker and Trustee Susie and, and Supervisor Spire can, uh, can share, uh, my passion for the, the situation. And, uh, after finding out, um, you know, that I was, as Chair of the Finance Committee and Vice Chairman of the Board of Commissioners, out of the loop on this issue, uh, they did apologize for the, the path in which they proceeded forward with the, uh, the resolution that they put forward. And they did, uh, acknowledge that, you know, going forward, should they feel like they're, uh, running into impediments, uh, they will without hesitation reach out to me directly. I insisted, uh, that if anything comes up and there's any obstacles, I'm more than happy to help facilitate wherever I can. And if it requires me coming right out to the site, I'll be there. Uh, they were very appreciative of that, and we certainly look forward to working with them, uh, going forward. And, uh, as I emphasized to them, if they ever need anything, I'm always here for them.
Thank you.
Excellent.
And just for your information, we did, um, move to, um, postpone the consideration for the resolution. So we're, we didn't pass that today.
Okay, that's, that's, I appreciate that. You guys didn't just, uh, vote, voted down?
Well, we want to make.
I made a motion, but nobody ever seconded it, so.
I, I hope, I hope the postponement doesn't mean it's going to float back up again.
We're making sure that one keeps their eye on the, on the, on the, on the ball.
We don't anticipate an issue, given your willingness. Uh, and again, Commissioner Drick and, uh, Commissioner Nakagiri, we thank them for their time as well. Uh, it was a, the meeting exceeded my expectations, and as with everything I do, I always have kind of high expectations. So I was very excited by that.
Yeah, we certainly, you know, appreciate you, uh, reaching out to us. Um, again, we were blindsided initially, so it was nice to be able to have that conversation and go through it, uh, detail by detail. From my side of the table, I think we resolved everything, and we're just moving forward and locked up to, uh, to make sure we deliver the best finished product possible, so.
Whatever the disconnect was between the, the commissioners and the, the central dispatch, I hope that gets resolved so that, moving forward, uh, this doesn't happen to others.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, there's a plan to make sure that there's more open communication with, uh, I would just say, public safety leadership and the board of commissioners to make sure that there is no, um, impediments that.
Like, there was a disconnect or something. I don't know.
Yeah. Absolutely. So the, the specific disconnect was, uh, the leadership from, from, I'll say, fire, which, you know, is essentially all the fire authorities, because they all, throughout the county, utilize the system. So the fire authorities had raised the issue to the actual system, to our central dispatch. Our central dispatch was being proactive and, and following up on it. But there was a lack of, uh, two-way communication between, uh, central dispatch and the fire authorities in terms of what step the county was at in terms of resolving the problem. And there was also a lack of communication in terms of, uh, central dispatch tackling this problem and sharing it with the board of commissioners. Um, the, the problem is a very solvable problem. Uh, it's just a matter of, um, the timing on Motorola's part, and then, of course, us as a county, uh, leadership team just not being aware of that there was a problem. We were notified by our county administrator when this issue came about, but we were also told that there was communication with Motorola and that this problem should be resolved. Uh, we were not aware of, uh, the extent of the problem, so, uh, it did not register as a, uh, critical, uh, issue at the time. But to your point, uh, we are very hopeful and optimistic that all communication issues have been, uh, resolved.
Yeah, Thursday was very productive. I appreciate your time.
Oh, absolutely. I'm, I'm glad to do it. Um, I'm always available to answer questions or provide information, so please don't hesitate.
Thank you.
And I did put out the call to our fine people in Conway and Handy to reach out if they have a tower location available.
We are, yes, we are in need of one last tower location in the northwestern part of the county to complete the, uh, entire project. So, um, I'm certainly eager and hopeful that they are able to, uh, provide that type of, uh, property for us. So thank you. Thank you for doing that.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you.
And I, I will note, regarding the health insurance, if you are interested in partnering with the county, um, our H.R. director is actually aware of those type of scenarios, uh, because Mr. Dunleavy from Osceola actually had a similar inquiry. And so if it's less expensive, uh, our H.R. department and leadership is certainly open to that. That's of interest to the, uh, board here, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other board comments? With that, I am open to a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll support.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.